Good evening and welcome to the May 1st meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Sonnani.
Here.
Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Agajanian. Please remain standing for the invocation afterwards.
Let's salute to the flag of most recognizable flag in the world.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, no God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Dr. Shane Kinnison, Senior Pastor, First Baptist Church.
Good evening, let us pray together. We hear and remember the admonitions of the ancients who told us that the beginning of knowledge is to have an awesome reverence for the Lord. And to remember our days and to apply our lives and our hearts to wisdom. So it is unto you that we pray, O God, Creator and Maker of us all, that we would acknowledge you, that we would have reverence for you, and in so doing, we would receive from you the knowledge and wisdom for daily living and for community care. We pray especially this night for these, the leaders of our city. We intercede for them and ask the richest blessings of wisdom, of knowledge, of cooperation, of mutual support and encouragement, not only among themselves, but for all who call Glendale home. And may we always remember each one who is a part of our community and let no one be invisible and let no one be invaluable, but let us all be worthy of one another's respect and concern and unconditional love. And we pray it in your name, who breathed life into us all.
May we have the report, please?
The agenda for the May 1st, 2018 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, April 27, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, what's next?
Presentation and appointments. At 3:00 a.m. is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, May 8, 2018. Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, if you would allow me to not do the agenda preview this evening, sir, and I have two items before us this evening, and I think we have a full room waiting for some announcements to be made. Again, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, it is my pleasure to bring forward two selections that I have made for vacant executive positions that we have in place now. The first is for the Assistant City Manager position for the city of Glendale. After an internal promotional process, I have made the selection of Mr. Rubik Golanian, Public Works Director, to serve as the Assistant City Manager for the city of Glendale. I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. Golanian for the past 18 years. His style, I believe, will absolutely complement mine and that of the executive team and the organization. He has demonstrated his leadership skills throughout his tenure here at the city, as well as previous positions that he has held. He has an appropriate level of political instincts, and as you know, that is very important as he serves as the Chief Operating Officer for the organization. Having an engineering background, he is a systems kind of guy, and he's got project management skills, which I think would bode well for a CEO position within the organization. His ability to build relationships will be an important asset to bring to this position as he gets more involved with labor groups within the organization, the community, the organization, et cetera. He will serve well, I think, in terms of bringing forward more efficiency measures as we look to the organization and continue to streamline our processes. He is a problem solver, as you all know, and you directly deal with him as the Public Works Director, almost on a weekly basis. He has the ability to analyze the situation and make appropriate recommendations, not always easy, but has that ability to bring recommendations forward, even if the answer sometimes is no. I think he'll represent me well when I'm not around, and I think he'll represent you as well, if you need to be represented at a community meeting. He has the respect of the executive team, the organization and the community, and that takes a lot of time in terms of that credibility building that happens within the organization and the community. And as you know, we have an executive team full of Type A personalities, and it's not always easy to do that, and it's a high standard, and he's done that very well. He's been with the city of Glendale within the Public Works Department for the past 18 years. Prior to that, he was in the private sector, and he also worked for the County of Fresno before he came to the city of Glendale. Some of the boards and affiliations that he has outside of the city of Glendale, he is on the Adventist Health Community Board. He is part of the American Society of Civil Engineers, and the list goes long in terms of the civil engineering background, which I know makes our Councilmember Agajanian very happy. He has a master's degree in organizational leadership from Woodbury University and a bachelor's in civil engineering from actually the U.K., City University in London. With that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to present to you and respectfully ask that you approve my selection of Rubik Golanian as Assistant City Manager.
Very well.
I have an official motion. Mr. Mayor, I move that pursuant to Glendale City Charter, Article 9, Section 4, and Government Code, Section 54957.1A5, the council hereby approves the city manager's appointment of Rubik Golanian as Assistant City Manager of the city of Glendale.
Second. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
Another professional engineer, yes.
Devine.
Married to one, yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Should have been one, yes.
Son of two parents, yes.
May we have the roll call, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Wow, I'm overwhelmed. First and foremost, thank you, Ms. Beers, for your kind words, for your encouragement, for your guidance over the years. I truly appreciate it. I do my utmost not to let you down. Thank you for your confidence in me. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for working with me alongside me, alongside the city for many years. I appreciate your guidance over the years also, and your encouragement and support. I have so many other people to thank, but I'm hoping this won't sound like the Oscar ceremony, but I must acknowledge my beautiful and supportive wife, excuse me, Maria. She's always encouraged me to excel in everything that I do, and alongside with my three, our three wonderful sons, Christopher, Alexander, and Matthew. Stand up, boys. We love them dearly, and they have given meaning to our lives. Here also are my loving mom, Oji, right here in the middle. Two out of three sisters who were able to attend, Nellie and Jenny, on the side of the hall. Thank you for being here, thank you for your undying love and support. I'm going to get emotional, but I have to also mention our late father, who passed away many years ago, a long time ago, when we were all young. But before then, he planted the seeds of hard work and strong values in all of us, and I know he'd be very proud if he were here today, and I hope he's watching from up there. There are countless others who have helped me to grow and to get to the stage in my career, from the hardworking men and women in public works, my friends and colleagues in other departments, our excellent executive team, most of whom are here, to all my friends and members of the community, thank you for your support and encouragement. We have a very well-run city, and together, we will continue our dedication and commitment to maintain and improve the safety and quality of life for everyone who lives here, comes to work here, and comes to visit our beautiful city. For 18 years, I've been very proud of being a part of this wonderful team of dedicated individuals, the Glendale family, if you will. Being appointed to this position is an honor and a privilege that I will not take lightly. My promise to you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager, is that we'll continue the pursuit of excellence in the delivery of high quality of services and the implementation of your policies and vision. We have some exciting opportunities ahead of us, and I look forward to working for you for many years to come.
Rubik, I know you're in a rush to go back to your seat, but maybe my colleagues and I have something to say to you. Do they?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Councilmember Garpetian.
First idea, of course I do. With Rubik, of course we do. First of all, congratulations. You mentioned that Glendale is one large family, and indeed it is, and I'm proud to be part of it. Few things about Rubik. I've worked with him for the last few years, known him for many years. First of all, he's got a sense of humor. I mean, he can make you laugh even in the toughest, toughest times. He's available, he's accessible. I had personal experience with his professionalism in this city. When we had the windstorms, one of my friends called in Wurigawood and said, "There's a tree down, it blocked my driveway, broke my house," or what have you. I called Rubik, I said, "Rubik, this is what's going on," and he says, "We are here already." So they were on the scene when this guy was calling me. And most importantly, he's a man of integrity and respect, and we really do appreciate that. And I wish you all the best, I know you're going to do well, and you are a great asset for our city. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Najarian.
Rubik, you've helped build this city from the foundation as a Public Works Director, and you've done a great job, and you've helped keep our streets and our sanitation and our roadways, everything else in tip-top shape. You've worked on transportation projects and helped Glendale get its fair share of applications of millions of dollars of grant funds through different sources, and we're very glad to have you now at the upper echelon of the departments, the Administrative Service Department, and oversee all the other departments in Glendale. And I know that you're going to put your magic touch on all those other departments so the staff and the managers are happy and motivated and continuing to provide the best service to the residents of Glendale. And you've got a great boss. We sang her praises last month, but I know that the two of you are going to work great together, and we expect the very best for the city of Glendale in the years to come.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. You don't have to sing.
Rubik, congratulations. You are indeed a hard worker. Anytime I think any of us calls or emails, you're right there with your crew, and they're out there doing their job, and I know that a lot of that is because of you. I think I want to congratulate our city manager on a wise decision, and now I guess I have to call you Mr. Assistant City Manager, huh? Yeah, yeah. Well, congratulations. I know you're going to do a fabulous job. Can see by the attendance tonight that you are well-liked, well-respected, and that goes a long way to being a good leader, so congrats.
Rubik, congratulations, and I want to add, whatever they said, if they would say professional engineer, would include all that. It's included. So, I just want to say, my parents had four kids, four sons, and you have three. So they said they want to have a girl, little girl, to add to the, those four, the family members, to be added. Now it's your time to try. You need one girl? And they tried, and the fifth one was a boy also.
There you go.
He won't have time, Mr. Agajanian.
I won't have time for that.
So, Mr. Agajanian, you're indicating that if the city manager position will help? Okay, that was an interesting message. I know you're eager to get back to work, so, thank you for the years of service, almost two decades. Your professionalism has been on display all that time, and today's promotion is a sign of appreciation, in a sense, for all the years of service to Glendale. There's a lot to be done in the future, so let's get on with the business.
Looking forward to it.
Running city, yeah, city government. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
You have something else, don't you?
I have something else, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council have a second appointment this evening. The second selection is that of the police chief. It is my pleasure to select Carl Povolitis as the next police chief for the city of Glendale, and Carl has been with the city of Glendale for 27 years. He has held many different positions within the police department, interim police chief, I was going to say interim city manager, interim police chief, deputy police chief, captain, and he was captain during a very critical time when we were dealing with a number of staffing situations, including in the areas of support services, field services, and the investigative services divisions. He's been a champion for real-time crime analysis technologies, which I think has really helped the department in solving crimes within the community. His leadership that he has brought to the department and his commitment to the organization and the community is truly unparalleled, and he's been doing it day in and day out for many, many years, without anybody asking him to be a part of this community and the community groups that he is a part of. Carl has the respect of the community, he has the respect of the troops, and I think you could see that by the number of folks who have shown up this evening. He has a respect of the executive team, and as I said earlier, the executive team, a tough group of folks within that team, a strong group of folks within that team, and Carl has had their support for many, many years. And he has the respect of the organization overall. I have to say that Carl has basically ran the department, I need to say that publicly, for at least the last 18 months, during a time that we really needed him, and he's done that with such professionalism, and I appreciate that, Carl. And he's done that for 18-plus months, but I wanted to make sure that I also bring that up, and he's done a tremendous job. He has the command of modern policing, as well as the ability to make sure that we continue to work within the areas that have proven to work for us over time. The boards that he's a part of are many, I'll name a few. Dignity Health is one of them, Glendale Educational Foundation, the Elks Club, the Chamber of Commerce. He has a master's degree from USC in public administration, and he went to Cal State University Fresno with a bachelor's in criminology. With that, Mr. Mayor, it is a pleasure, and members of the City Council, it is a pleasure to bring forward and respectfully ask that you approve my selection for the next police chief for the city of Glendale, and that's Carl Povolitis.
Ms. Devine, do you have a motion?
Yes, I would like to move pursuant to Article 4, Section 4 of the Glendale City Charter, and California Government Code, Section 54957.1A5, the council hereby approves the city manager's appointment of Carl Povolitis as the Chief of Police for the city of Glendale. Pursuant to Article 24, Section 10 of the City Charter, the Civil Service Commission shall certify the appointment to the Director of Human Resources.
Do we have a second?
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Sonnani.
Yes.
Hi, Chief.
Good evening. I'm usually not at a loss for words, as most people would tell you, but this might be one evening where I'm a little bit at a loss for words. Ms. Beers, thank you for putting the name forward, and your words are way too kind, but I appreciate, as Rubik said, your confidence. And to the City Council, thank you very much for the opportunity. I am truly humbled by this opportunity to lead what I think is the premier law enforcement agency in the United States. I have had the opportunity to work with most of you along the way in various capacities throughout the department. I've appreciated those opportunities, and I've appreciated not only your commitment, but everybody's commitment to making Glendale a much safer and a much better community. And I think that holds through. I think I have a lot of thank yous, but let me introduce just a couple of people. One is someone who provides a little inspiration. I'd like to be able to introduce my mom, sitting over here, Joan Condon. She literally just got back in the United States yesterday. She was down in Panama, flew into San Francisco last night, lives where I grew up, I was raised up in the Monterey Peninsula, and drove down here today to be here this evening for this event. And so, one of my colleagues had asked me, "Well, was she down there vacationing or is she down there saving the world?" And of course, my answer is, she's down there saving the world. For those of you who don't know, my mom works for a nonprofit called Capacity Tar that works in places in the world that have trauma, and she works on the Train the Trainer program. So, it's places in the world like El Salvador in the 1990s, it's places like Rwanda, it's places like Panama, it's Guatemala, it's some very interesting places in the world. But I will tell you, she has been truly an inspiration, because although we might not see eye to eye on politics all the time, we have great discussions, and we're still friends. But, you know, it's hard to argue with somebody who realizes something needs to be done, who rolls up their sleeves and gets it done, and that's why I said she is very much an inspiration. The other person I'd like to introduce personally, is a friend of mine that was a college roommate that I've known for a long time, we had different paths through the criminal justice system, but somebody who's always been there is sort of the sounding board, or when you need, you know, you need that little bit of time, and that's my friend, Robert Brewster. I now need to thank an awful lot of people, so again, I will try not to make it sound like an Oscar speech, but let me start with thanking the men and women of the Glendale Police Department, has been my privilege to work with, and for the last few months as the interim chief, lead the men and women of the Glendale Police Department. And I got to tell you, they are the finest men and women, the hardest-working men and women, and the best law enforcement agency that you can find. And if you need, if you need any question of that, or if anybody has any question of that, if you just look at the events of the last week that Glendale has experienced, you know, the unplanned demonstrations, the planned demonstrations, the events of the last week, and you look at how those men and women responded to that, coming into work, handling things day in and day out, I don't think I really probably need to say anything more than that, then I can tell you that myself and the entire command staff and the management team could not be prouder of that group. So I got to thank every single one of them for the work they do on a daily basis, their confidence in me, and what they have done. I would also like to take a moment to, you know, really thank the associations, especially over the last few months, working as the interim chief. So to the POA, GCA, GMA, I really want to thank you for the candid conversations that we've been able to have. I value the perspectives. Our goals are very much the same, of maintaining a sharp and forward-looking organization that provides the best of service, and I appreciate the time and energy and the exchange of ideas and your commitment to helping us move forward as an organization, so I cannot say thank you enough to those organizations. And then, I think there are one or two people behind me that I managed to say. The hard part or the fun part of having been able to work for Glendale Police Department and its commitment, community policing, to the extent that one wants to get involved in the community, you meet all sorts of people. And I'm not going to try and name everybody who has come in here, but I have to tell you from, from folks, okay, the Kiwanis Club of Glendale, I got to mention them, but there's some Rotarians in the audience as well. And wouldn't you know, the Rotarians make noise tonight. The opportunity to work with that, whether it's the Educational Foundation, whether it's been the ANC, whether it's been Glendale Memorial Hospital, whether it's been various mental health organizations, has been very rewarding. And those organizations have formed some lifelong friendships, people that ultimately I started off as a police officer, working with in Adams Square or the downtown Glendale merchants, just to name a couple, that have then turned into lifelong friendships and valued advisors in the community, and so I obviously cannot thank them enough either. And then I think there's one other large group of people here in light blue uniforms. If you want to see what the future of the Glendale Police Department looks like, it's our Explorer program. When we look at the challenges that every law enforcement agency is having throughout the country, and that is hiring and retaining good people, it is quite the challenge. And as someone said a few weeks ago, although we can work on hiring people, and we will work on hiring, and we will continue to hire the best and the brightest that we can find, at some point, we have to grow our own. And if you look in the audience behind me, the men and women, the young men and women in those light blue shirts, we're growing our own. And this organization will continue to move forward, not only with the best and the brightest, but an organization that continues to reflect this community and its diversity, which makes it strength. So, I guess we'll say in conclusion, I am truly humbled by this honor. I look forward to moving forward with you. I look forward to working and continuing to work with the executive team to make Glendale a safer place, a better place, and the best place in California to live. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Chief, congratulations.
Thank you.
27 years of service. Want to thank you for that. And two questions for you. You said you were lost for words?
You didn't see the long version of the speech.
The second question, who's patrolling the streets? Everybody from Glendale P.D. are here.
I actually forgot to mention, there would probably be a few more here, but we're a little busy out there, a little busy out there tonight.
Now, I just want to congratulate you and thank you for your dedication and commitment to our community and our city. The number of people in this room is a testament to how respected you are, and you're respected because you are a professional gentleman. And I've seen so many police chiefs, and we were talking about it today, that you always have a smile on your face, and it's very odd. It's a good quality, very good quality, very good quality, let me put it that way. Having humor in everything you do is important. I want to congratulate you and looking forward for many years to come to work with you and make Glendale even a better city than it is. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Garpetian. Mr. Najarian.
Thank you, Chief. And I've been calling you chief for about four years now. So you've been involved in the leadership of the police department for a decade or more in the upper echelon, and you've truly had an impact on our officers. And I agree with you when you say that the Glendale Police Department is the greatest law enforcement agency in the United States. And I agree with you when you salute your officers for their sensitivity in these last few weeks, where emotions have been high, and they've maintained their cool, their professionalism, their friendliness, and you've really scored a big hit with the community with the actions of your officers. They've done a great job. But it hasn't been just the last two weeks. I mean, I want you to know that in the last few years, as incidents around the country have been splashed before us on the TV screen, shootings and beatings and human rights violations by officers in Sacramento, in the South, in Cleveland, in Burbank, in Pasadena, every day I get up and I thank our GPD for having, sticking to their training and their sensitivity and their control under very intense circumstances, and even circumstances not so intense, when they're called to loud music from one of our favorite restaurants downtown. They're very polite, and they're very professional, and they handle it the way it should be handled. And I know you're going to continue this work with our officers, men and women who do a great job in making us proud as City Council members about the work that you do in keeping our city one of the best cities. Not only is our police department one of the best, let's go out and say that our city is one of the best cities in all the United States, and you play such a huge role in that, and we're placing our trust in you to continue that for the years to come. And I've never been so confident of a ratification of a position than I am today with you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Carl, congratulations.
Thank you.
I have to say that you're always gracious and friendly and kind to everyone. You were, you know, giving your mom kudos, and I have to say, if you know the phrase, the apple doesn't fall far from the tree, well, you may be saving lives and changing the world, but so is Carl changing, chief, I should say. The chief is changing lives here in Glendale and possibly in far-reaching places. So I am proud to know you. I'm so proud that you've achieved this position, and I know that our police department will continue to thrive, and we will continue to be so proud of all of that department. So, congrats.
Thank you, Carl, for your service, and I know you since 20 years ago when I, very first time I interviewed you. And you were open, you were, as now you are, you're very friendly, and when you left the very first interview, everybody was very happy. They, you know, when people, they come from other countries, they think differently about police. So you came on the program, and everybody after the interview were calling me, this was such a nice person whom you invited for an interview, and I, during the years, I realized that's a true face of you. I mean, you are kind and honest person, and again, thank you for your service.
Chief, congratulations. I have to agree with everything that my colleague said. Now, I've had a few appointments now in the last five years that I've been on council, and this was probably the easiest one. It was just, you know, the reflection again of 27 years of loyal service to the city of Glendale's residents. And, you know, we've gotten used to a certain level of safety, and we expect that level or higher in the future, and you know that, you talked about it. So no pressure.
No pressure. I got it, no pressure.
But other than that, good luck. I'm sure you're gonna do a fantastic job, and all the faith that's been put in you is, again, going to be justified. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we're going to move forward with the agenda. If folks have to leave, that was probably a good time. You don't have to, but if you want to, take a little 30-second break. Okay, next item on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor and Council, 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, May 2018. Rather than reading that for the sake of time, we will simply state that the agenda will be posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall, as well as online on our city website. For anyone who would like an agenda forecast, they may contact our website, contact our office at 818-548-4000 to know what is on the upcoming agenda. Next item on the agenda at 3B is Proclamation Designating May 2018 as Building and Safety Month.
Thank you. If I can ask everyone to congregate outside the chambers, that'd be great, so we can conduct our meeting. Okay. I have a proclamation that I would like to present to Celine Sarkis-Lu.
Mr. Mayor, while Celine is making her way up, I think with a building official, I will tell you they are very pleased and proud to be accepting this. It's my chance to remind people, when you walk into a building, you expect that that building's going to stand, you even subconsciously feel you're gonna be safe there, it's because of these people here tonight and that work every day in building and safety. So with that, I present Celine Sarkis-Lu and our building official, Jan Bear.
Okay, welcome. I have, do you want to go first, or should I read the?
Doesn't matter.
Go ahead.
First of all, I want to say, good evening, Mayor Sinanian, council members and staff. Billy and Safety Team would like to thank you for this opportunity to share this important proclamation. It means a lot to our department. We would like to invite our community to join us on May 23rd. We will have a community partnering event on May 23rd at 11 o'clock. We will have more than 22 vendors, we'll have presentations, and also scholarship opportunities. You can find more information on our webpage on our website.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
We're really fortunate to have a new member of our team, which is Celine, who took over the Building and Safety Month program. It's been actually nationally recognized by the International Code Council because we're so active in what we do, and each year it gets better. And so I just wanted to make sure she got recognition for all her hard work for this year.
Very good, and I'm going to read the proclamation into the record. Whereas it is well documented that each year thousands of lives have been saved and millions of dollars of property damage have been averted through the enactment of building codes, and whereas the city of Glendale has been adopting building codes for the well-being of our community since 1913, to protect our citizens from the effects of earthquakes, windstorms, fires, floods, and more recently, to ensure accessibility, energy, and resource conservation to create a sustainable community. And whereas this year's nationally recognized effort to celebrate Building and Safety Month incorporates the themes of partnering with code officials to build stronger, safer communities, advancing resilient communities through science and technology, protecting communities from disasters, safeguarding our water, improving education and training standards for a safer tomorrow, and now, therefore, I, Zara Sinanian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, California, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as Building and Safety Month, so that we can recognize the importance of building codes in our community and dedicated professionals of our Building and Safety Team who are working daily to keep our community safe. I'm going to ask Councilmember Carpetian to... Thank you, thank you for everything that you do. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
See his reappointment of Laura Prozian to the Housing Authority.
Yes, do we have Ms. Prozian, is she here?
No.
Ms. Prozian wasn't feeling well, and so she did leave, but she extends her regards.
And she was with us during the housing meeting, so if, do we have a motion or comments?
I'll move her appointment.
Do we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Merson.
Yes. Congratulations on Ms. Prozian on being reappointed to the Housing Authority. Next item, please.
Next item is a Consent Calendar, including minutes following the routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed. Staff is requesting pulling items H and J.
Do we have a motion for the balance of the consent calendar?
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Second. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Merson.
Yes. Ms. Beers, do you want to present items number 4H?
If I can read that into the record, Mr. Mayor and Council. H is Director of Community Services and Parks Regarding Sole Source Purchase of a Mobile Self-Contained LED Screen. H1 is Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing Sole Source Purchase Delivery and Training of a Self-Contained Self-Supporting 15-Foot-by-9-Foot Mobile LED Screen by the vendor.
We're gonna go directly to Mr. Bolinikian, Community Services and Parks Director.
Thank you, Mayor Sinanian, members of the council. Staff is requesting to sole source and purchase a LED screen, an all-in-one LED screen, for $73,000. This unit that we'd like to purchase will be used for all of our programs citywide. We have our Movies in the Park program, Cruise Night, and a number of special events that are put on by nonprofit organizations in Glendale. We currently do have a Movies in the Park equipment that was purchased in 2004. That equipment is outdated. The equipment that we're requesting to purchase will be, you know, top-notch, all installed on a trailer, very user-friendly. It'll be user-friendly, and also less labor-intensive. Currently, we have four employees setting up the equipment. This will require two employees to set up the equipment, and in about 20, 30 minutes. So we're requesting for council to approve the sole source, so we can use the equipment at a number of special events. We're also hoping to use the screen once when the Paseo is complete, work with our friends over at Economic Development, and have the unit at a variety of events. We also will come to council, and actually, the Parks Commission first, to have the unit available for rent. We'll put in our citywide fee schedule, so we will get our return on investment. Something similar to this unit is $7,000 to rent per event, so we'll be making our money in 11 events.
Thank you, Mr. Bolinikian.
I just, if there's no question, I would just make a motion. I'll move the item.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Merson.
Yes. Item 4J, please.
4J, listed here as interim, but now Chief of Police regarding NIJ 2017 DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Reduction Grant. One is a motion authorizing the acceptance of the grant and authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary agreements, certification, and other documents required to accept the grant. Two is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing purchasing administrator to issue a purchase order for software from niche vision and equipment from Life Technologies. Three is a resolution appropriating $150,000.
Artie, do you have to actually formally issue a correction to the agenda, because it says interim?
I thought it would be a nice gesture, he is now the chief after all.
No, it's a good catch, I like that. Hi, Chief, hello again.
Hello again.
Back so soon.
Carl Pulvetta, so now I gotta remember not to put the word interim in front of it, it's been kind of a police chief. What you have before you is our request to appropriate $150,000 in federal grant funds for capacity enhancement and backlog reduction for our DNA lab. What we're asking to do with this funding is to purchase mixture interpretation software. It is a purchase, additional purchase of software that council authorized a couple of years ago. What this will allow us is to purchase three additional licenses, so each one of our analysts will have their own license as the software is used when you have multiple results or multiple samples within a piece of DNA evidence, and you need to figure out which sample or which, whose DNA is in there. So that will be used for that, the appropriation, appropriate support and variation of that. We'd like to keep it the same so that we do not have to retrain or change any of our protocols within the lab and help maintain our accreditation. The second item for sole source, sole source is a quantitation device, that's the AB 7500 RT. After we extract DNA, we need to determine how much DNA is actually available before they go through the rest of the process. We have one of the exact same type of equipment, we're asking to buy a second one. The original was purchased when we opened the lab a number of years ago. The second one will allow us to enhance our capacity. Again, does not require any additional training, downtime for training, does not require any change in procedures. So the balance of the funding will be used for training, and that's through our normal city processing.
Chief, questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Merson.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Does anyone, Mr. Carpetian?
No, in the interest of time, I...
You'll pass?
Yes.
Okay, I have one. I'm just very proud to announce that our own Alex Theater was ranked number one Best Concert Venue on the LA Hot List. This was out of a possible 18 venues in Southern California. So congratulations to Alyssa Glickman and her team at the Alex Theater, and of course, this council who is proud and happy to support the Alex in maintaining its historic and entertainment value. I would also like to mention to the community that, not to forget, that we also have the Antaeus Live Theater here in Glendale on Broadway. They're now presenting Native Sun. I happened to attend the play this weekend. It is absolutely magnificent, powerful. If you get a chance, take advantage of live theater here in Glendale, Antaeus, on Broadway, across the street from Raffi's Restaurant, in case you don't know where it is. But it's a fabulous play, and we should be proud here in Glendale that we have the Alex Theater and the Antaeus Theater, offering us entertainment and the arts every weekend. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I guess you pass. I will make just one comment. In the last 10 days, the people of the Republic of Armenia, a place where many Glendalian's call their ancestral home, have achieved a peaceful velvet revolution, and that's not what my comment is about. It's about the demonstrations and rallies that have taken place in the city of Glendale. They've been, you know, pretty intense and large at times, but I want to praise and thank our police for the fantastic job that they've done in ushering... in making sure that the demonstrators were safe, that the events were conducted in the most orderly and peaceful manner. Of course, not that they were not peaceful, but anyway, your role was, I was there at many of them, and I saw what a fantastic job you did, and I think everyone truly, really appreciated it. So, thank you. Well done. And that's all I have. And we have a three-minute card, Nikki Winslow, who I'd like to invite to the microphone. Hi, Nikki.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, council members, city manager, and city staff. My name is Nikki Winslow, I'm the Assistant Director for the Library Arts and Culture Department, and I'm here to inform you and invite you to our Mental Health Resource Fair that's happening this Friday, May 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. As I know all of you are aware, Library Arts and Culture embarked on a mental health initiative to create an accessible, safe, and welcoming environment at all eight Glendale library locations by providing support to staff, working with patrons impacted by mental health or mental illness, and by fostering a supportive environment for community members who are in need of greater assistance. The mental health initiative had three components, the first being educating staff, which we did last year through grant funding we received through the California State Library. The second was bringing on a social worker, which we employed Mary Leisure to work part-time last summer through the grant funding. She's now part-time staff as a city staff member that works for us 20 hours a week. And lastly was raising public awareness. My library supervisor over Montrose, and Chevy Chase, Tiffany Berrios, and Mary Leisure secured more grant funding to be able to offer our first, and I believe it will be annual, mental health fair. This is to connect the community with the organizations and resources that can provide the help they need. The fair will provide workshops, information booths, and a wellness area where participants can learn about self-care techniques like yoga, painting, and aromatherapy. The keynote speaker will be the National Alliance on Mental Illness, one of our partner groups, which will be presenting their In Your Own Voice program. The keynote will start at 10:00 a.m. in our auditorium at Downtown Central. Some of our partners in the community include the Glendale Police Department Mental Health Evaluation Team, GUSD, GCC, the Department of Mental Health, as well as many other supporting organizations. It's been a humbling experience planning this, because we ran out of tables, there's so many organizations that want to be involved, which is why I think this will be our first annual of this event. This continues to be an evolving program and a much appreciated and needed service in the Glendale community, as well as all over Southern California. We have really expanded our local and regional partnerships through this effort, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Devine?
Can you describe the duties, or in what capacity does the social worker serve the library and the people that attend the library?
So she mainly works out of Downtown Central, and her hours in the beginning were like... like from 9:00 to 1:00 and lately she's been adjusting them, sometimes coming in 2:00 to 7:00 because she's trying to encounter as many people in the branch setting that she can. If, let's say there's somebody that at a, like Casa Verdugo or another branch that the staff feel needs help, she'll set up time to go out there and meet individually with them. So, she kind of walks around and assesses people that she thinks need to be connected to services. She works really closely with Ascensia, who is actually the partner organization that helped us identify her as the perfect person for this job. She previously ran winter shelters in Glendale and really knows the community and the people that need her help here. So, Ascensia comes out every Tuesday and she will actually connect some of the caseworkers there with people at the library. So, she's ultimately just trying to reach out to people that look like they need help and she sends an email daily to myself, our director and Tiffany, who is technically her supervisor. She's doing amazing work.
So, you actually have access to residents or individuals that need this sort of help?
Oh, absolutely. And you'd be amazed how many there are. And she's, you know, got this training to be able to identify, just looking through the room, who needs help in a way that I don't even think I can.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we have some, next item is the three-minute community event announcements and we have several cards. We'll start with Oscar Rodriguez and Sevada Hamelians, followed by Tony Dovlatian.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, Honorable Members of Council, City Manager Beers, Distinguished City Staff. We're here, the Rotary Club of Glendale Noon, to make our final announcement. Our Cars for Cops show is finally this Sunday. I've invited some of my committee members here to make the announcement with me. We have Elizabeth Manassarian, Sevada Hamelians and Stephen Hendry here and they're gonna talk a little bit about our car show.
So, this is our second year doing the show. This year, due to overwhelming demand and with the support of the city management and city council members, we were able to secure the location across the street at Vertigo Park. Last year was at Lot 34. So, this year, we're doubling the capacity, as they say. We're expecting over 150 cars, lots of people to come out, enjoy, you know, the fineness of the park, but as well as the setting of all the classics, hot rods, you know, exotic type cars. And, you know, again, the benefit of this program, the fundraising that's been raised and it's a tremendous amount of money that we've been able to pull in because of the, you know, the commitment of this community towards the organizations that we support, which are the Police Foundation, as well as the United Unified School Districts. There's programs there that are gonna get earmarked from the funds that are gonna be raised from this event to help support those programs consistently and we're excited to congratulate the chief with his promotion, as well as Mr. Galanian with your promotion. So, we're duly excited to be a part of this fabric of this community and supporting all the great work that goes on here and the things that we can do as Rotarians. And Carl, Rotarians, you know, Kowanians are Rotarians in training, remember that, right? So, all right. So, and finally, we do have a diamond sponsor that is stepping up as a vehicle component of the event. We're gonna have Pacific BMW providing four vehicles that day for us to test drive. So, if anybody feels like checking out a BMW, you know, you never know, there might be a spot for you with an option to lease on the day of with some great programs, so. And they are a $10,000 sponsor, so a lot of, again, those types of organizations have stepped up to help support this event and in turn, we support other projects in town. So, thank you again and, you know, hope to see you all on Sunday.
So, you have a trophy category this year, right?
Yes, and you should see the trophies.
You didn't have it last year. Is the, we didn't have trophies, did we have trophies last year or no?
We did. We did. We did win it. Well, we'll make sure that we have a special section for this runner-ups. Okay. That's right.
All right.
So, anyway, that's it. We're, you know, we're hoping to have a great turnout that day from the audience and again, thanks for your support in getting this venue this year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. And we have Tony Dovlatian, followed by Mike Mohill.
Is that three?
Three minutes, uh-huh.
Mr. Mayor and Honorable Counsel, I am here to say thank you for your service to this community and we're gonna miss Madam Mayor as well. I don't know where she went, but hers was an outstanding service as well. We're, the previous mayor, yeah.
Previous mayor was mayor five years ago.
Madam Mayor Garpetian.
Oh, I see. Okay.
I was Madam Mayor before him.
That's who I'm talking about, yeah. Well, Madam Mayor and Mr. Mayor, if I could continue and not...
Please, if you have your time, you still have your time.
Yeah, oh, thank you. Appreciate that. And we appreciate seeing you, Mr. Sinanian, among those who are celebrating a greatest victory since 30 years ago, but we're here also to express our concerns of saying enough is enough of political exploitation, businessizing and politicizing the sacred memories of the one and a half million saints, my grandfather's sisters being among them, and also the businessizing and politicizing and politically exploiting the blood-filled struggles for the last 30 years of mine people of Republic of Armenia to politicize and gain political favor or vote, or whatever it might be here in the United States. And this through mainly service and support of the Armenian Revolutionary Federation, who has been in coalition with the dictatorship and the murders of 2008, March 1st in Republic of Armenia. This is the expression and concern and demand of hundreds and close to 1,000 Armenians in Armenia who have joined our petition to United States Congress, Second District Office of Ted Poe in Texas and also Arizona Congresswoman Martha McSally. I'm sure you've probably run into the petition itself. Now, what we're also concerned with is with localized celebrations and everything, that we keep everything civilized and I'm happy and I welcome your suggestion for that, but also those of us that know the intelligence community or security, what you have mainly is containment and diffusal of really pure demand for democracy that's really observed by local political forces and mainly ARF in coalition, we believe, with the dictatorship of Robert Kocharion and Ser Sarkisian to contain and diffuse this political energy so that it doesn't reach its destination to demand justice. I'm here to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, one way or the other, Robert Kocharion and cabinet and family members involved in those murders, Ser Sarkisian and his family and all ARF leadership who have visited the United States from Armenia, each and every one will face justice for we are prepared now to submit papers to United States District Court, to United States General Attorney's Office, whatever it takes. The only reply I get from friends is that, "Are you crazy to get up there and say this because you're gonna get killed?" I got news for you, ladies and gentlemen. No one outside, no one in this room is gonna stand on the face of this earth any longer than any telephone pole that's outside, but what counts in the end is not the things you've done that you've regret, but the things you have not. So, some things are worth the risk. I've watched my people bleed. That's my time?
Take, I mean, just wrap it up.
Yeah, wrapping it up is I appreciate all those who've stood with my people in demanding justice. This is bipartisan. America first is what I say, but I'm also Armenian. I wanna see Armenia just as law-abiding as mine lovely United States. So, together, we'll establish that relationship, but we first gotta put criminals in jail. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. All right, Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, council members. Congratulations, Rubik Galonian. As expected, you are our new Assistant City Manager.
Did you write about that?
I sure did. You read it in your Glendale, in your Glendale Community Newsletter about how many months ago, Carl? Rubik. Carl, congratulations to you too.
Chief, he's chief.
Excuse me, due respect, due respect. I'm sorry. I've known him so long, you know. Okay, knowing the good things about him. He's the pleasant replacement of our previous chief, Castro. He left in disgrace. Okay, on another note, you recently discussed the consent item of human resources for the classification of titles in which you give compensation increases to city employees. Wasn't it on the consent calendar? Everybody just approved it? That was item number 4K, Human Resources Classification, where you give, where people have classification change and they get pay raises at the same time? Am I correct about that? Is that, is that an incorrect statement?
It's incorrect.
Okay, question. When people get a classification change, do they not put them in step for a pay raise in the future? City Manager Beers, is that true? Am I wrong?
Mr. Mohill.
When you did the classification changes for these employees, does it set them up for a pay raise in the future?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'd be more than happy to discuss the item with Mr. Mohill offline since he didn't put in a card. I'd be more than happy.
No, I did put in a card. That's why I'm speaking right now.
Just for the record, you didn't put in a card to speak on that item, so.
Because you ran it right through, I didn't have a chance to speak on it. So, that's why I'm speaking during this three-minute portion.
By the time the meeting starts, Mr. Mohill.
I'd just like to know, my understanding where it says establishment of classification titles, okay, for city employees, that generally goes with the pay raise?
Not here. Not in this case.
No pay increase?
No.
Well, as a taxpayer of Glendale, thank God.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Was I correct in saying no? That was my understanding, that it's literally setting.
You're just setting the classifications, Mr. Mayor. You're absolutely correct.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Then what it means changing the classification then?
You're setting classifications that are not part of the salary ordinance currently in certain cases and they're all listed within the report. In certain cases, the classifications are vacant today and may be reallocated to a classification such as paralegal and we would go out and recruit for that position. In other cases, it's just a title change based on today's standards within the Glendale Water and Power Department. Some of the classifications have been in place since the 90s and are not current, based on what is needed today. So, it all depends on which classification we're talking about, but overall, there is no financial impact on that item.
Right, and we would have had a very robust conversation on this had the item been pulled, of course, but I hope this allays your fears and we'll move on to the next item. Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Next item, please.
It would be action items, Chief of Police regarding execution of purchase orders with police air support helicopter vendors for five years' terms for a not-to-exceed amount of $700,000, 881 Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing the Purchasing Administrator to Execute Five-Year Purchase Orders for Maintenance Repairs and Parts of the Air Support Helicopters with Helicopter Technology Corporation, Rotocraft Support Incorporated, Aero Computers, Airborne System, Spectral Lab Incorporated and Broadcast Microwave Series Incorporated.
Welcome back, Chief.
Thank you, Carl Povletis, Police Chief, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We come before you about every five years with this. Helicopters are very specialized pieces of equipment and under certain circumstances, we can only go to specific vendors for their repair and service or the equipment that is on them, as since much of that equipment is proprietary. In this case, we're asking you to authorize us to enter into purchase orders with five companies over the next five years. Not that all of that money will be spent, but when we need a particular repair, we need the paperwork in place with the company that does that. The actual costs, although we booked the full cost initially, the costs for our joint air support unit are split 50/50 with Burbank, so we were reimbursed for half of what we spent. The five companies that we're asking for purchase orders with are Helicopter Technologies Incorporated, that is for the replacement of our rotor blades. It actually saves us, it saves us money to go direct to the helicopter blade manufacturer as opposed to buying them through a, through a third party, which would be the manufacturer. Rotocraft Support is a backup for our maintenance. Normally, our maintenance is done by our in-house mechanic and one other mechanic we have in retainer, but occasionally, we need something that needs to be done by a factory-authorized service center and Rotocraft Support is the only one here in Los Angeles County and I believe Southern California. The other three are for equipment that we have on the aircraft. Aero Computers is our mapping system, so this keeps our software maps up to date and provides for repair. Spectral Lab is our night sun, the light that you see on the aircraft when it lights the area up at night. Again, proprietary, this is for repairs of that. And the last one is Broadcast Microwave Systems. As you know, we have camera equipment onboard the aircraft. The microwave, Broadcast Microwave Systems allows us to downlink that to officers in the field so they can see what the helicopter sees. Again, it's proprietary and we need to have a purchase order placed in case we need to repair that. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, thank you, Chief. Councilmember Garpetian?
Yes, just a clarification, that $700,000 is between Glendale and Burbank, the entire amount and...
That's the entire amount. In reality, I wouldn't expect that we'd spend that entire amount.
Right, but we are responsible for 50% of that amount and that will add up to $60,000 a year for us for next...
Approximately.
Something like that, yeah, $70,000 a year for next five years if we spend the entire amount. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Chief, we pay, thank you, we pay the full amount and Burbank reimburses their portion.
Then we have a billing system with Burbank.
How long does it take for them to actually...
Oh, they're usually paying us within 30 days. It's, it's, it's how we arranged it when we put the joint unit together.
And it's been a cooperative effort on these helicopters that's worked very well, right?
Very cooperative effort and it's worked very well.
I just have a question, how the system works? Like, we have one officer or two officers, they have two officers, how this police air support works?
We both assign personnel, so right now, we're providing the supervisor. We provide a couple of pilots and tactical flight officers. Burbank also provides that. We jointly own three helicopters between the two cities. We schedule and we service both Burbank and Glendale. Glendale provides the administrative support for the finances and then we send a bill every month to Burbank and Burbank reimburses us for 50% of the cost. We are responsible for our own personnel costs, they're responsible for their own personnel costs, we split the operational costs.
No, but how many officers are we assigned to this job?
We have three, Burbank has two.
And then we share the cost?
We share the cost, not of the personnel.
And when they use the helicopter, they go together or our officers, they go alone and they...
It is, it is truly a joint, it is truly a joint unit, so the crew could be two Glendale officers, it could be a Burbank and a Glendale officer, it could be two Burbank officers. Generally, it's a mixed crew, but as I said, we jointly own, we jointly operate this unit. It is, it is a true joint operation.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Do we have a motion? So moved. Second. Maybe have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Zaga-Janian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian. Yes. Next item, please.
8B would be Director of Innovation, Performance and Audit Regarding Progress Report on Innovation, Performance and Audit Department. 8B, motion to note and file report.
Thank you. Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is a status report for the Department of Innovation, Performance and Audit, what we like to call it is IPA. And as you know, as part of the budget discussion last year, the department was formed under the leadership of Elena Bulbulian and she's here to give you a status update of what they have been working on. As you're aware, audit has been in place, internal audit has been in place with the city of Glendale for a little over 18 years, probably close to 19 years. And audits function was really in place for all of these years to make sure that we are minimizing organizational risk overall, but at times, what do you do with that piece of the audits that occur once the departments have implemented the recommendations that have come forward? The rest of the department, in terms of the innovation piece and the performance piece, I think bring the three areas together very well and Elena will go through that with you. Elena.
Mayor Sinanian and members of the city council, my team and I are excited to be here tonight to share with you some of the highlights of what we have learned and accomplished since you, as the city council, took the forward-looking action to establish the Department of Innovation, Performance or Audit, or as we'd like to call it IPA. If at that time, it felt like you were taking a leap into the unknown, let me reassure you that you were not alone in feeling that way. We have come to learn that we are part of a small yet growing list of global cities who are embracing innovation as a way to more effectively solve problems. Tonight, I will highlight how we got to this point, explain IPA and how it works, present an early test case and most importantly, tell you how we plan to measure success. Today, our organization is 20% smaller due to our downsizing and realignment of services which began in 2012 with the elimination of the redevelopment agency. which began in 2012 with the elimination of the redevelopment agency. With those reductions in staff, service levels stayed the same, and current city staff resources are carrying that extra load of the employees that exited the organization. This leaves no time for strategic thinking. And as you saw during this morning's budget study session, the five-year financial forecasts show revenues not quite keeping up with costs. In short, we have to embrace new approaches to continue to deliver great service. Enter IPA. IPA is a city department that finds new ways to deliver great service to the City of Glendale. IPA stands for Innovation, Performance, and Audit. As Ms. Beers alluded, IPA is an evolution of the longstanding internal audit team. So for 20 years, internal audit has focused on assessing organizational risk and internal controls. With the incremental addition of innovation and performance, we now have an opportunity to make a bigger impact as the three pieces of IPA build off of each other. Let's explore each function in a little more detail, starting with audit. Audit reviews city operations to assist rest, to assist, to assess risk and identifies opportunities for improvement. You may recall that each year, we bring to you the annual audit work plan that contains the list of audits that we plan to tackle after it has been presented to the audit committee. We will continue to do that. Next is innovation. Innovation is doing things differently so that we can do them better. The opportunity, the areas that audit discovers lead to prospects for innovation who then introduces new ideas or approaches. Meanwhile, performance assesses whether those new approaches are effective. And from a citywide perspective, performance conveys how the city organization is functioning through performance indicators. Summing it up, problems are identified by audit, solutions are applied by innovation, and effectiveness is measured by performance. With IPA, we have an opportunity to take audit findings, pair them with non-traditional approaches, and measure for results. As I alluded to in my introduction, Glendale IPA has joined a growing community of agencies and cities who want to deliver better government services. We are learning from leading innovation experts and trainers from Harvard Kennedy School and Bloomberg philanthropies. Both organizations invest in programs and funding focused on government innovation, and we now have joined this group. Innovation is also a priority for this country, starting at the top with the United States Digital Service and ATF, two agencies who work across the federal government to deliver better services through technology and design. At the state level, FISCAL is a new department whose goal is to combine the state's financial business into a single system. At the local level, we have joined cities around the world who are investing in innovation like we are to better serve our, to better serve our communities. Regionally, we have joined forces with the cities of Los Angeles, Long Beach, West Hollywood, Santa Monica, just to name a few, and together, we are known as the West Coast Innovation Convening Group. We meet quarterly to share ideas and lessons learned. So with all of this information, we wanted to quickly get to work to make an immediate To determine where we put our initial efforts that mattered most to Glendale, we went to one of our three opportunity areas. So this is, where do we go to, to innovate, because there are so many options? Our three opportunity areas are through our audit reports, through our innovation partners, and by listening for feedback. Before we tackle any IPA project, we want to define what success looks like. Success can be measured in multiple ways. Sometimes, this is done by looking at quantitative measures like return on investment through time and money. However, as a public institution, we must also consider qualitative measures of success. These are expressed in things like customer satisfaction, an engaged community, transparency, and public trust. So for IPA, we, we rely on your priorities as the city council in measuring success. So with success in mind, we rolled up our sleeves and went to work. For our first test case, we went directly to an audit report on the city's development impact fees. These fees are assessed on new development when certain thresholds are met in order to provide for park, recreation, and library facilities. An audit revealed a high number of errors in calculation of the impact fees. And after analyzing the audit, the contributing factor to the inaccurate fee calculation was a seven-page paper-based contract that required manual data entry. We assembled a team from the Community Development and Community Services and Parks Departments to create the digital fee calculator, which is simple to use and reduces errors. Reduced errors result in more accurate revenue collection, better customer service, and redirected staff time. So why does the digital fee calculator matter? Because it directly impacts three of the 10 city council priorities. These being fiscal responsibility, exceptional customer service, and an informed and engaged community. Besides the digital fee calculator, we're working on other projects, but given the time constraints, I will just highlight two of them. The first is an ADU cheat sheet. ADUs are accessory, accessory dwelling units, also known as granny flats. This cheat, the cheat sheet is intended to be a proactive response, given the highly anticipated interest in this new housing option. By gathering key information that will help anyone considering an ADU in Glendale, and design the information with the resident in mind. Absent the cheat sheet, an owner must meet with seven different divisions whose offices are located in different buildings with varying hours of operation to get the information that they need. Next is our police, police recruiting efforts. The newly minted police chief mentioned recruiting to fill vacancies in the police department, relying on explorers as our future pool. We are working with the police department in modernizing their recruitment strategies by investing in digital marketing campaigns and advertising in non-traditional outlets. We're also developing checklists that unveil the numerous hiring steps and the timelines involved. Both these efforts are intended to widen the applicant pool and increase retention during the lengthy hiring process. In conclusion, new conditions require new responses, and we're just getting started. We look forward to coming back to city council periodically to share our successes and lessons learned. And at this time, I'd like to thank the IPA staff who have contributed to the successful launch of our department. They're all here tonight supporting me, Jesse, Natalie, Samir, Ani, Greg, and Sam. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions the council may have.
Ms. Devine?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, you mentioned errors were made in the calculations.
That's correct.
Did we correct those and recoup our funds? Hopefully, that was how the error was.
Yeah, because it's a recent audit that was issued, we are working through those issues, through those issue, correcting those errors. So there were times where we overcharged, we're working to correct those, and there were times where we undercharged. And so, yes, we are working to correct those.
Okay, great. And my next question is, where are you now with this digital fee calculator?
So, good question. We are testing the tool because what we don't want to do is turn over a tool that's not going to be useful, because that'll just end up in another audit, which is what we're trying to avoid. And so, we're testing the tool with city staff to make sure it works, and upon that testing, we're also going to be testing it with property owners. So we'll go to our permit center, find a willing property owner who'll sit down at our computer and test it out to make sure that it works, because everything that we designed in IPA is going to be catered to the customer who's going to use it.
Okay, so there's, you have a process in, in place for this calculator?
Correct.
Thank you, thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Ms. Devine.
Just a quick question, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned development impact fees. These are impact fees for, for parks, or what kind of impact fees were there?
The development impact fees are for parks and library facilities.
Parks and library facilities. And in some cases, we overcharged, in other cases, we didn't charge enough?
Yeah, so I'll just pull up real quickly the audit findings. So we tested 20, our test work involved 20 transactions, and of those 20, we discovered seven had incorrect fees, so 35%. Upon further review of those seven, five just needed clarification in terms of the type of development or square footage, so only five of the seven actually had an overcharge, and the total amount is less than $30,000. And we are working to get those addressed.
Got it, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Yes.
I have a question. It says the IPA has three functions. You mentioned audit, I can understand it. Performance, I understand. When it comes to innovation, then somehow in this pamphlet, you're explaining thinking to work smarter. I don't know why this innovation give me the impression like Bill Gates, Steve Jobs, so.
Yeah, no, that's great. That's who we draw some inspiration from, we do. We do draw some inspiration for the private sector who has already used human-centered design or user-centered design in developing their products, so we do draw inspiration from that. We're just applying that to our government services.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Is this a risk note in file? Okay, do we have a motion?
Second.
May we have the roll call, please? Thank you, Ms. Bobulian.
I'm sorry, it was moved by Councilmember Carpetian. Thank you.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Moved, and then Carpetian seconded.
Thank you. Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinani?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is City Clerk regarding city council regular meeting schedules for the remainder of the 2017-18 fiscal year and for the 2018-19 fiscal year. C1 is a motion modifying city council regular meeting schedule for the remainder of the 17-18 fiscal year. Two is a motion establishing city council regular meeting schedule for the 2018-19 fiscal year and canceling specific, specified council meetings.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion? Do we need, do we need a report on?
The only, the only thing I would add to this report is that there, this calendar, this proposed calendar does not, no, does not have Veterans Day or the, the council meeting after Veterans Day as being dark. If you wish to add that, you should note that in your motion as a modification. Otherwise, we are scheduled to have a meeting.
What, what's the date on that?
That's November 13th, and one of the reasons why it wasn't is partially because we have a lot of dates when we are dark towards the end of the year, partly because of the holidays.
Why don't we keep that on the, on the calendar then? Let's keep it open. We have a motion, does your motion stand?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
May we have the roll call, please? Thank you.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinani?
Yes, thank you, sir. May we move on to the next item, please?
Next item is hearings. 9A is City Attorney and Director of Community Development regarding extension of urgency ordinance number 5912 prohibiting issuance of entitlements and/or permits for residential development projects, including residential mixed-use projects in the downtown specific plan DSP area. 9A1 is introduction of ordinance providing for 10-month and 15-day extension of urgency interim ordinance number 5912 prohibiting issuance of entitlements and/or permits for the residential development projects, including residential mixed-use projects in the downtown specific plan DSP area.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Landzepfim, this is the, the moratorium that came before us about 35 days ago?
Yes, in fact, two things. We want to give you our, what we call the 10-day report. There's a report that's due 10 days before the expiration of the ordinance, as well as some information about the moratorium itself. So some background, on March 13th, the city council initiated some zone changes for the downtown specific plan. You had asked us to look at various, a, a number of areas. We have banded those into several groupings that we can look at together. Current incentives and standards being one, development impact fees, it's really a traffic fee, and inclusionary housing, then some other policies that would include hotels, and we'll get a little more detail. On March 27th, the council adopted a 45-day urgency ordinance, a moratorium on all residential development, including mixed use, in the downtown specific plan area. As I say, we had banded some of those things that you wanted to look at. The open space standards themselves, that is the base standard, as well as those that were, that aligned with incentives. Inclusionary housing, that is something that is underway currently. We hope to be bringing back to you this summer a policy on inclusionary housing, design enhancements, height, and height averaging, that is a concept that, that allows you to look at different heights on one, but come up with an average for all buildings. Form-based code versus density, right now, we have what we call a form-based code. We, we create the envelope through height and stories and floor area ratio. Developers and, and property owners are able to do what they can, whatever they want within that envelope. That has created a lot of smaller units. It has been, the council has expressed the desire for larger three-bedroom, perhaps three-bedroom units instead of three one-bedroom units. We may be able to get that through a density, that is a unit per acre standard. And then finally, traffic impact fees, something to look at in terms of mitigating the impacts that we found in the downtown specific plan EIR back in 2006. Not part of the 10-day report, because the, the, the report really is geared towards the, the moratorium in residential development, but you also asked us to look at hotel parking and the floor area ratio standards. So that will be part of the work plan that we take on in the next year or so. We have met with some design consultants, and we're drafting the potential scope of work to look at all of those things. As I mentioned, we're already underway with our study on inclusionary housing. We have in the budget, we are looking at funding for a traffic study. Now, we were planning to do that with the update of our circulation element, which will also be our mobility plan. That's probably sometime further away than we would like to, to do this in relation to the moratorium, so we may be advancing that, that work on the traffic study. Regardless of whether a moratorium is extended after the 11th, May 11th, when it expires, we will continue to work on those things that you have directed us. Specifically, the moratorium, it allows, the government code allows cities to adopt moratoriums, to maintain the status quo in order to look at these very standards that you're asking. It's not required, but it is certainly there should the council wish to, to maintain that status quo. It requires a four-fifths vote, which you had on the 45-day. An extension would also require a four-fifths vote. The, the, the moratorium that you adopted back in March expires in 45 days of its own terms unless you act to extend it. That date, May 11th. It can be extended up to 10 months and 15 days, which would give you a full year of the moratorium. You also can extend beyond that one year. So full amount would be two years with both extensions. I, I've gone through this before, our 10-day report is in, is in a, an exhibit to your report. It shows the areas that we have banded these, these issues, these elements into that we will look at over the next year or so. I do want to make you aware of one thing, so going forward, you may want to consider. We currently have two grants out, a four, total of $475,000, that are geared towards our, our South Glendale Community Plan. They are the Tropical Study and then to prepare the EIR. Those are both due in July. We need to complete them to complete the terms of the grant. In the South Glendale Community Plan, we know there's some cleanup that we're going to bring forward for you to consider. That is to add certain parcels to the. That is to add certain parcels to the DSP area. They are currently in a split zone, where there's a single ownership in adjacent properties that are in two different zones. There are twenty-one parcels. We would like for you to consider cleaning that up and including those. They are generally, not generally, they are, all on the east-west side of Central, and they're what we call widows and orphans. They are parking lots that, that go with the property that is on Central Avenue. We have, in the past, the council has done a similar action on a case-by-case basis, and we certainly could do that again. And, and so for your consideration later is, is one of those items, and I'll, I'll get back to it to, for some direction. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Yvette Nukian for a review of the findings that are necessary for the moratorium.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yvette Nukian from the city attorney's office. I won't repeat what Mr. Landzepfim covered, but just to go into the findings that are required to pass the moratorium. Because this moratorium could have the effect of denying approvals for projects having a component of multifamily housing, the state requires the council to make some slightly more stringent findings than they made at the first forty-five-day moratorium. Sorry. So the findings that are in the government code require, are three. That, one, that the continued approval of the multifamily housing projects would have specific adverse impacts upon public health and safety, that the ordinance that you're about to pass is necessary to mitigate or avoid the impact, and that there's no feasible alternative. And just to go into slightly more detail, on the first finding, what this really means is we have to identify significant quantifiable impacts, and they have to be based on written public health and safety standards, policies, or conditions. And so for the ordinance itself, if you look at the actual text of the ordinance, we based it upon the downtown specific plan adverse impacts that were identified in the final EIR, which the ones that did not have any feasible mitigation were traffic volumes, air quality, public services, visual character noise, and the last two were not in the downtown specific plan, but they are impacts. They may not be health and safety impacts, but there is an affordable housing crisis in the state, as we've all repeatedly acknowledged, and as well as the council's discussion that the incentives have not produced meaningful open space. The second finding, we based that on the fact that residential development is quickly approaching the level studied in the downtown specific plan final EIR. There has been a lot of development in a very short amount of time. And then there's no feasible alternative. We believe we can make that, or you can make that finding, based on the fact that a lot of these impacts did not have feasible mitigation measures. And at the time that the downtown specific plan EIR was certified, the council at that time did adopt a statement of overriding considerations, which meant that they were willing to accept that there weren't feasible alternatives. But it is, this council's prerogative, we believe, to say that, at this point, we are not willing to accept these costs. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Landzepfim to finish the presentation.
Mr. Mayor, the current forty-five-day ordinance has excluded projects with improved entitlements. Those are two that have not yet pulled permits. One is subject to a development agreement, another one is in plan check and almost ready to pull their permit. The proposed ordinance in front of you includes that same exemption. It also includes an, an exemption on actions that will be requested and decided in the future related to the South Glendale Community Plan. Those are those twenty-one parcels. You can handle that several different, a couple of different ways. You could exempt those actions to add the parcels from the, a moratorium, should you adopt an extension. You can exempt that, those, that action. If you do, and at some point in the future you add those twenty-one, they would be subject to moratorium. That's the first way. The second way that you could handle that is to take them out altogether, tell us that you don't want to look at that as part of the South Glendale Community Plan. We'll take that out for consideration. And then the moratorium really doesn't need to deal with it. You could, at some point in the future, when those are being developed, look at it on a case-by-case basis. So we would like confirmation of the, the first exemption. We would like your direction on the second. And then any other options that you may come as part of your deliberation, we would ask if there's something else that you want included, to identify that, and we can include that as part of the ordinance, the final ordinance, that comes to you next week.
We have a question. Just a second. Yes, go ahead, Mr. [inaudible].
If you go back one slide, that, how many projects do we have that they have entitlements already? Residential mixed-use projects?
There are two. The project at the old, I shouldn't say old, it's still there, the Big Five site, that was a project that was entitled a few years back with a, a long-term development agreement. And it was because there was a lease running on that Big Five property, and it couldn't be developed with the project. The time the council approved that development agreement, which preserved their development rights for, I want to say it was fourteen years, and that's due to expire in three or four.
Fourteen years?
This was approved over a decade ago?
This was approved maybe five, six years ago?
So if it's fourteen years...
Before my time, so it had to be overfunded.
Could be.
Yeah, it was a while ago.
Yeah.
And what is the other one?
And the other one is a project on North Brand. It's in the four-hundred block of North Brand. Excuse me. And that is a project that goes from Brand to Orange.
This is the old Gaucho's Village?
The old Gaucho's Village.
Am I...
The old Gaucho's Village. It changed design, came back for a design change. It has been in plan check, and they're getting ready to pull their foundation permits.
So if the design has changed, who approved the design? Design change?
It was a design, it was a modification of the design. The council approved that...
Probably four years ago, because, not in my time.
I'll have to go back and look.
Okay.
But it has been in plan check, and they're ready to pull their permits.
Okay. Mr. Moyles, take note of the fact that this Big Five project was from a decade ago.
I remember that.
Okay, just making record.
And let's also take note that I was vehemently against it. This was the Frank Quintero, Laura Friedman, Dave Weaver, someone else firm. It was a crazy thing to extend their development rights out to fourteen or seventeen years. Look back, Mr. Moyles. And I wasn't doing my math either back then.
Can I ask a question about the twenty-one parcels? You said if we take them out, if we take them out and we change the policies, the zoning, fees, would they be subject to those if we take them out of this moratorium now? Does that make sense?
The, the item, the item that's before you is, any actions we take to modify the DSP would be exempt from the moratorium. In other words, we could go, you could go forward with that action. That action that we're contemplating is the addition of these twenty-one parcels. If you do, at some point in the future, if you do add those twenty-one, they would be subject to the moratorium.
We could take them out now?
You could say, you know what, we don't want to add those twenty-one to the DSP, in which case, we'll, we'll take that off when we come back with the DSP, I'm sorry, with the South Glendale Community Plan. We'll just, we'll take that consideration out, and we'll just leave them outside the DSP. Then at some point in the future, if they, if somebody wants to develop them, they could come back and request that general plan amendment at that time for that specific property.
Or, or the council could, correct me, Phil, could just delay that particular decision whether to include those in DSP when we bring back the South Glendale Community Plan.
Could do that as well.
So you can defer that decision to later time.
I mean, look, let me, let me just...
Just knowing, if I, just so we're clear, as Phil said, just so we're clear, that if you do, at that point, and you do want to include them, you do want to make that decision, then you would have to look at this moratorium and...
I think we're, we're making, making this a little bit more difficult than it is. That twenty-one lots, they should, they should go away until and unless, when, when we finish with our, our decision here tonight, one way or the other, if it's extended or not, or, or what have you. Whenever there is a project proposed on any of these lots, we may, I don't know, there may not ever be a project proposed on these lots. Whenever they, they propose a project on these lots, then, like every other project did individually, they will come out and ask for general plan amendment. I don't think mixing all this with South Glendale Community Plan with this, this decision is just going, it's a merry-go-round. I, I don't see the point of, we're trying to, we're saying there's, we are at the tip of that four thousand units or forty-two hundred units. We're almost achieving that goal that this South Glendale or downtown specific plan had. Now we're trying to add twenty-one more properties and increase their zoning to the same, same, same downtown specific plan. I don't see the, the thing, I personally only...
We weren't really trying to do that, we were just trying to give you the flexibility to do that later on if you wanted to consider it.
I mean, what is...
I think we, I think we hear where you're all at. We, we don't want to have the discussion on that part of it.
Me too.
So we, I think we just go forward and have the discussion on the moratorium.
Right. That's, that's, I'm only one over, that's my thing.
Because it seems like it's unnecessarily complicating this issue. We'll revisit that issue at a later time.
Final piece of information, again, a reminder, the moratorium that you adopted in March expires on May eleventh. If you wish to extend that, you would need to introduce the ordinance today, followed by a public hearing. We would bring that back next week with whatever additions or subtractions you want. If you wanted to take, and it sounds like you do, we would alter the ordinance to take out those twenty-one parcels. You would adopt, if you adopt on, or you would need to adopt on May eighth, in order to have that done prior to the expiration of the moratorium. That completes our presentation, and staff from both departments available.
Do you have questions for Mr. Landzepfim? Do you want?
No, that takes time, no.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open the public hearing. I'm, I'm going to invite the speakers up, and I'm going to give everyone three minutes. We've had extensive discussion on this, and, I mean, unless, you know what, before I do that, Mr. City Attorney, is there any, any progress on carve-outs or...
Well, let me ask that question. So when we, when we first discussed this moratorium thirty-five, forty days ago, the, I think the consensus was that we wanted to exclude commercial buildings. We wanted to, because there were, there haven't been any built, it's basically at a halt. We were going to exclude hotels in general, except as we deal with the parking ratio issues and that. The third area was to carve out adaptive reuse projects that are onsite, and in, in the context of that adaptive reuse, adding a, a small number of units as an adjunct or an annex to that is, and the hotels have passed muster, the commercial building exclusion have passed muster as carve-outs. Can there be a way to carve out the adaptive reuse of an existing building? So where there's no new construction being done, a, basically reuse of that building, like the Masonic Temple, so to speak, with a small number of units as an adjunct to that? Is there a way to carve that out that would fit within the...
Can I ask, what's the definition of a small amount of units?
I think we said fifty or other, I think is what we were talking about. That the council has, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you know, the answer, and I have to give the typical lawyer answer, but it, it depends. So let's start off, so first of all, the hotel and commercial, I mean, that's really one use, and, and as we discussed the last time, you know, the request was for a moratorium on residential development, including mixed, mixed-use residential development. And, and we expressed a view that because we, the EIR studied residential as a grouping and commercial, in terms of we looked at a build-out scenario of residential, and we looked at build-out of office or, and retail, we are close to reaching that, that build-out number on residential, that legally, it would be appropriate to say, we want to put a moratorium on this, to look at adjusting our standards and to preserve the status quo while we're doing that. And as, as Phil and Yvette explained, that's what we're doing, and that's what we're making the findings to do, to do. When you have, when you're adopting a moratorium, however, that is imposing a, a limit on approved multifamily approvals, as Yvette noted, you have to make very specific findings. They're more, they're, they're beyond what we normally would have to do when we're adopting legislation. When you're adopting typical zoning legislation, it's really judged on a very, I don't want to say loose, but a very flexible standard of due process, the rational basis standard, you know, it's, we basically have to be able to articulate a basis of why we think this, this particular regulation is appropriate. In the context of, of a moratorium that's limiting multifamily approvals, you have to go a little bit further and identify rationale. I expressed the concern the last time on the carve-outs, and, and the concern is still there, but I think there's, there is some flexibility that we're making these findings that we're close to hitting that cap on the build-out, and that additional units are going to cause these physical health and safety impacts. We've identified them in the findings. And so if you're making, if you're, if you're making that statement on the one hand, but then also carving out, we just want to make sure there's no inconsistency there, because I, we do think that a court reviewing this may, may look at it this with a more jaundiced eye than they would in the normal, normal circumstances. That said, the cases also say that, that as a legislative body, you're entitled to make distinctions, you're entitled to identify, for example, that a larger project with more units, with more net new units, as I think what you're suggesting, is going to contribute more to our problems of traffic and air quality and, and noise and those sorts of things that we've identified. And the only point I've been trying to express is that the, the law here is untested. So I, I do, if you are inclined to institute some carve-outs to this, we, we only encourage you to do so with a sparing eye, to do it with the eye towards the impacts, and I think has been suggested by you, and I think others on the council, Councilmember Najarian, is that where you have a project, for example, the adaptive reuse, where perhaps we can identify projects where the traffic impacts, the other physical impacts caused by projects are going to be the same or less than the project that's there, that might be a basis to do that. So if council's inclined to do that, we'd ask for direction, and then our staff will go and try to identify some additional findings to justify those, those additional exclusions. Again, we just need to have some evidence that we can point to why the carved-out projects will not have the same or will have lesser impacts than the projects in general that we are prohibiting from being built during this period.
Right. And we all know, any planning staff member will tell you that the impacts of a commercial building with its office use and its nine-to-five regimen of cars flowing in at nine and flowing in at five are much more intense than a residential use. So the purpose of this carve-out would be, you're taking a, an impact that's currently in the community, and you're adjusting it to having a less of an impact. The traffic impact will be less, the construction impact will be less, the, the other impacts cumulative will be less than if you were to build out from zero a new, a new construction, a new of multi-use.
I think there's probably evidence in the...
So I mean, that's, that's where I'm, that's where I'm thinking, and I'm sure that staff, especially legal staff and planning staff working together can come up with justification. In any event, should there be a challenge to that, what happens? Let's say it goes, someone would challenge it and say, no, that's not fair. It goes to a judge. What would the judge do? Kick it back to us to make an adjustment to that?
If, if a court were to say your, your carve-outs invalidate your ordinance because they're not, they're inconsistent, what, what I believe will happen is they will put it back to the council to say either get rid of your carve-out or get rid of your moratorium, but if, if they find that they're, they're inconsistent.
So it's not a huge multimillion-dollar money judgment, it would be a corrective action on the part of the council, which we've, we correct things all the time when we're instructed to.
Well, not all the time.
We try. Well, sometimes we appeal.
Okay, I think we have enough.
So, yeah, maybe, let me think of what I was, what I was going to...
Why don't I open, open it to oral comments, and so, did I open the public hearing already?
Yes.
Okay. First speaker is Kimia Azad Mart, followed by Nayra Sobatian. Three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the council. This is my first time in this meeting. I usually watch, watch this from the TV, but here I am. I just wanted to come here and raise my voice, make sure I touch on some of the subjects that were talked about. Actually, you just, we're talking about the moratorium. I'm a Glendale resident myself over 20 years. I have engineering background, construction background, mechanical engineer. And I wanted to come here and first of all, thank you all for running this beautiful city. It runs like a clock and you've done a fantastic job ever since I've been here. I have no complaint about that, except in the last couple of years, when I first noticed the demolitions going on in downtown area. I'm referring to especially residential multi-family units. I was questioning back then why these constructions are going up all simultaneously, putting a lot of pressure on traffic, not to mention the future impact that it will have on fire department, on police department, on our medical facilities. And I was really surprised why this, the phasing of these, all these constructions were not thought through extensively. Because you talked about the impacts. These impacts should have been studied ahead of time. If you think we're going to have a problem now with all these multi-family units, wait till all residents move in. We're talking about over six, 7,000 people. I'm just estimating. I don't know the exact numbers. But when you have a multi, you know, family units, let's say 150 units, you can easily multiply that by two. That's really the number of cars moving in and out of Glendale every day. And it's already putting pressure while the construction is going on, but it will be even worse when they have full, you know, 100% occupancies. And I just, you know, I wanted to come here and raise my voice and, and I'm, I'm glad that some of the subjects were, were touched upon and hopefully, unfortunately, it's too late. These constructions are already there. But I'm surprised to see that they're still going up. And I, I just don't understand the, the full, you know, planning behind it and what was driving it. Because it seems like there's not enough planning were done to study the impacts. That's all I need to say.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And we have Nayra Sobatian, followed by Mike Mohell.
Good evening. My name is Nayra Sobatian. I reside just one block away from the DSP area where most of the developments happened and are currently sought. DSP and its vicinity regions have greatly suffered from those excessive developments, both in the community character and most importantly, in the quality of life for the residents. Some of the adverse impacts, such as traffic congestion and parking shortage are visible and have been acknowledged by you. Some others, such as air pollution, greenhouse gas emissions, delayed emergency response times and others, are not immediately quantifiable, but those are undeniable. As the city staff mentioned, we have the requested evidence to apply to the moratorium. Traffic congestion accounts for more smog and air pollutants, which affect our health, as well as delays in emergency response times, which have become fatal in some cases, and that affects our safety. Moreover, traffic increase threatens with the increase of car accidents and pedestrian fatalities. The secondary effects of parking shortage also accounted adverse impacts on our health by increasing smog and pollution for additional miles we have to drive to find parking, as well as impact on our safety, where we're forced to park away from our homes and walk longer distances, at times heavy-handed. Previously, I mentioned about the other adverse impacts on our health and safety, which are air pollution from such exceeding density, causing numerous chronic illnesses such as asthma, lung, lung and heart diseases, even cancer. Greenhouse gas emissions threatening with climate change, delays in emergency response times due to the shortage of public service personnel. Today, you are in the position to reverse the steroid growth in Glendale and steer Glendale in the direction of sensible and responsible development. It is obvious that developers will always want to maximize their profits and get more density incentives. It is undisputed that those density incentives have been largely abused. The end result is what we have now. No meaningful green open space to help us get stress relief and massive developments deteriorating our health and safety and quality of life. There's no problem with more profits for developers unless those are at the expense of public health, safety and quality of life, which we experience today. As we recall, last time we had 15 community representatives urging you to adopt the moratorium, and the only person who objected to it was Rodney Khan, a consultant representing interest of developers. Today, even though the same people could not be present for a number of health and family reasons, on behalf of them all, I urge you to extend the moratorium and put an end to this dangerously incentivized development in Glendale for the sake of public health, safety and quality of life. I also urge you to expand the moratorium and cover all developments, residential and hotels, including in Glendale seeking density and height incentives, also pipeline projects. And I would also urge you to expand the moratorium and cover developments outside the DSP that are in the vicinity, even though it is unfair to use DSP as a sword to apply the same incentives to other developments outside the DSP and then to use it as a shield and to exclude those. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Mohell, followed by Rodney Khan.
We don't forget your name, Julie, Mr. Najarian.
You're killing me, man.
This is you. This is you. This is your trademark. Read my lips, fool the public and the local newspapers. Okay, can I start now?
Of course, please.
With the clock already, can you set me at three minutes, please?
But you did get in like 20 seconds of hammer time.
He made an ad lib on me. So what am I going to do? Let it go?
Let's start.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor Sinanian, council members?
Good evening, Jan.
Thank you. The recent moratorium that was passed by council several weeks ago was a joke. Tonight, if you do not pass a moratorium for at least one year, your action tonight will still be a joke. This council, like other cities, has the power to put a moratorium on all new projects, Mayor Sinanian, including projects that are still in the pipeline. Please do not try and fool the public with a weak moratorium, but one with teeth. We need to stop projects like the Indigo Hotel and the 21 mega apartment complexes that are already in the pipeline. We need to do a new citywide traffic circulation study. The last city traffic circulation study was completed 40 years ago in 1978. We need to address traffic congestion, noise pollution, parking shortage, air quality, lack of green space, and of course, the overdevelopment in our jewel city. We need to, we need to take the design of future projects out of the hands of our council members, who have no architectural or related background. We need to give that responsibility to professionals who sit on the city design review board. In order for staff to do a proper moratorium study, a static mode must be made and not the current fluid mode. How can staff perform a detailed and proper study on all the negative impacts that all these mega projects have caused in the downtown and surrounding neighborhoods over the last 10 years when the moratorium is in a fluid and dynamic mode instead of a static mode? The present system is ripe, ripe with corruption. I'll say it again, ripe with corruption. The present system has allowed a shrewd and clever politician, Councilman Arne Najarian, to send out campaign mailers, which fooled the public and one of our local newspapers, when he stated he voted against seven mega projects, including the Monstrosity 180-unit Vasilia apartment complex at the former site of Office Depot at Broadway and Pacific. Also, Mayor Sinanian, before you approved the Monstrosity Vasilia apartment complex, you called the site a wasteland and an empty parking lot. Council must take action to remove the appearance of corruption before we, before we are acting and looking like the city of Belle. And Mr. Sinanian, you fooled the public. This is not the truth, is it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohell. Rodney Khan, followed by Ali Jones or Ali Jones?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are located on Brand Boulevard here in the city of Glendale. I previously spoke to you on two separate occasions of this moratorium. And I talked to you in the past about people who are looking to invest in our community and how this may impact them. I also talked about not being able to time the financial markets, which none of us can do. And I also talked about the uncertainty that this creates. All of that was discussed, and I think you as the council contemplated it, but it didn't seem to resonate in terms of the impacts that this, something like a moratorium would create. I looked to page two of your staff report, and in particular, I look at the bullet points, and I think all of these bullet points are relevant. What else I think is relevant is what's stated at the end of the paragraph, which states that all of this can be studied, could be changed and could be implemented without a moratorium. It's not as if any of this can't be done if you have no moratorium. All of this analysis, all of this can take place and be implemented. A moratorium stops the big projects. Yes, it does. But it also stops the smaller projects. It also stops people from wanting to invest in our community. We have people that have looked at and analyzed this and tried to come to a conclusion that would be helpful to the city. The conclusion being that no moratorium is needed to make these changes. I think you, the city council, I think you are trying to do what is right for the citizens of Glendale, and I truly believe that. I just think that extending a moratorium is the wrong approach. There's been comments made specifically as it relates to carve-outs. And I'll tell you, if you're looking at carve-outs, people that have invested in our community, own the land, they've contributed to our community in many, many different ways, significantly in our community, the community college. They've invested in different numerous charities in our city. They have invested, they have paid, they have complete applications that are in. If you're looking to carve something out, they should be included in that carve-out. I'll conclude my remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. And we have Ali Jones, followed by Susan Wolfson.
Hi, thanks for having me.
Good evening.
Okay. So let's just keep it pretty simple. You know, we spoke on this multiple times. We've had the meetings. Listen, this gentleman here, there are studies going on. So until the studies are complete, with the tropical study, July 2018, until that's done, we have to extend the moratorium. There's just no other way around it. I mean, it doesn't make sense to approve a project without the EIR done, the impact studies that are currently underway. They need more time to handle what the council has suggested. So I need you guys' help. Glendale needs you all's help. We all do. Let's just make the smart decision. It's pretty simple. So I urge you all to extend the moratorium. And then from there, you know, we can approve projects that have been approved based on the, the studies that are available and that have been done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Susan Wolfson?
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian and other council members and our dedicated city staff. My name is Susan Wolfson, and tonight I'm here to comment on the proposed urgency ordinance extension. This could be a very good thing. The original 45-day time period is too short for a proper analysis of the impact of additional development in the downtown specific plan area. We have all experienced the additional traffic caused by developments completed in the past several years. And as was mentioned earlier, I think a lot of them are not completely full yet. So this extension is absolutely necessary for the urgency interim ordinance to have any real value. However, we would like to ask the council to take two additional steps. First, if there are projects already in the pipeline, and I believe there are several, further work on them should be halted until the analysis has been completed. I think council does have the power to do this. Second, the South Glendale Community Plan must also be halted until the analysis has been completed. These two additional steps are necessary because without taking them, any study of negative impacts due to further development will be flawed by the lack of a consistent baseline to evaluate. I want to thank you for allowing me time to comment tonight and for your service to our city.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last speaking card that we have. We can, let's start asking questions.
For Mr. Garcia, I think, on this carve-out. Number one, if it's challenged, is that going to cost the city any, any money if they take us to court? What's the fiscal impact of that?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, council member Devine, I, I do believe it's something we would handle in-house. So the cost would be our internal cost to file court papers and that sort of thing.
So it would cost us, okay, if, if we carve this out, and it is on Brand, I believe, the, the, what is it, the adaptive reuse site, Brand or Central, would we have to do a traffic study for that particular location and will that cost us?
It would depend a little bit on whether or not, how the council were to frame the exception or carve-out. And one suggestion would be to require an analysis of whether or not that project's going to have any additional trip generation or traffic impact. And that's the exception, that there would be a traffic study, but it would be paid for by the applicant, I presume, and with some staff time and cost to review it internally.
Yes, Mr. Najarian?
I was going to make some comments. So if anyone has questions, I'll yield to them.
Yeah, yes.
I have a couple of questions. I just want to be a little bit more clear as to when we say carve-outs and carve-outs and carve-outs. I, I, my goal has never been for, I don't know if, which project are we talking about? My goal has never been to carve out one project versus another. My goal has always been for the conversions. I always talk about converting a property into a condominium project or converting the existing apartment buildings into condominium projects. And the other question that I have about these two projects that have entitlement already, I, because our goal is to be fair, to be honest with you. I'm not here to, you know, they've been waiting for that Big Five site, I think because the Big Five has a lease. And that's why it hasn't been developed. Otherwise, it would have been done by the rest of the projects. My question is if, forget about the DSP, if, because I want to be fair throughout the city, that, that's the question I have, that in a residential neighborhood, if a property owner has an entitlement through design review approval to build a house, right, and something happens and they don't have their permits yet, and council changes the zoning, for example, right, they downzone it or up, or what have you, something changes in the zoning, would that entitlement hold or they will be subject to new zoning? Because whatever applies to that, I'm going to apply it to this one.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so legally, this, a city can change its rules and those changed rules will apply to any project that doesn't have a vested right to develop. And you can get a vested right in just a couple of ways. One is, you One is, you have your building permits, and you've incurred substantial hard costs and reliance of that permit. So, you know, usually it's pouring a foundation, that's the legal rule. So if you had it in a situation, somebody had an approval in a multifamily zone, for example, or a single family, and it was downzoned, and they can no longer build according to that design review approval, technically speaking, you could apply those new rules as long as they haven't obtained that vested right. Another way to obtain a vested right is to do a development agreement, which is the one where the Big Five site, they've got a development agreement, so therefore they have a vested right to build that project, even though we may change our rules. Our practice has generally been that when we've changed rules or we've suspended something, we, for example, for a while, we suspended the application of development fee increases to different projects and whatnot. We generally apply it, we generally allow projects that have their discretionary entitlements to move forward, even though technically speaking, we can say, no, it's got to apply to a new project. That's just, I'm just giving you the general gist. But legally speaking, we can apply a new rule to any project that has not obtained a vested right.
And vested right is just a plain, plain English, vested right is having a building permit.
Building permit.
Or have a portion of the, like the foundation done, or have a...
Building permit and obtain, and incur some hard costs and reliance of it, yeah, foundation permit, poured, and poured the foundation in connection with it, or had the permit for the house and started the substantial, or not grading, but usually it's a little more... Our practice, I don't think anytime we've ever changed rule, we've gone that hard to require that additional cost. We've usually stopped at the building permits, okay, if you have the building permit, then we're going to treat you as grandfathered.
Right, that was my understanding as well, if you have the building...
But that's been a legislative decision by councils to say, we're going to grandfather you in if you have your permits, regardless of whether or not you've obtained that additional vested right.
I just want to know what our practice has been in the residential neighborhoods, because most of the time, we let these large projects go, not most of the time, some of the time, and when it comes to a guy who's trying to develop a little house, or add a couple of rooms to his house because he doesn't have the building permit and code changes, or it gets downzoned, or what have you, they have to go back to the drawing boards. So I want to make sure that I'm understanding this process right, so the decision will be made based on that. Thank you.
Mr. Nagerian, did you have a question?
Yeah.
So if somebody has the building permit, so it's finished, we can't change, regardless what we decide today, whoever has building permit will stay, right?
Again, if you have a building permit, our practice has been to allow that project to go forward, even if the rules change. Legally speaking, you can require them something more. We haven't done that just for ease of enforcement, it's difficult, so now we've got to go out to the site and see how much of the foundation they poured. So we've always, out of the ease of enforcement, just said, once you have your building permit, we're going to treat you as vested, even though technically we could go a little bit further.
So what I hear is that the Big Five, we're stuck with, because it's part of a development agreement.
My understanding, my reflection is that it has a development agreement, it is vested in terms of the units, the size, the, I think there was a carve-out in that development agreement that, you know, the actual design, if the staff feels that it's not, you know, it needs to be really looked at, it could bring it back to council, but the actual build-out, the form of that is set per the development agreement.
Okay, so we're stuck with Big Five. The other one is the one on Brand.
The Big Five, the lease isn't up for five to eight years, correct? So we don't have to, I mean, there's...
Are they, are they in front of us?
The Big Five is there for at least five, eight more years.
Big Five is there for, let me say, several more years. I don't know the exact number, but it's more than three.
So they would be subject to the old rules if we make modifications to our downtown specific plan, they'd be under the pre-moratorium.
Because of their development agreement.
Right.
Nor are they in front of us, right? It's not like they're coming back with something, or, are they building? Are they...
Not yet.
They can't, because the Big Five has a lease.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, it's kind of a mood issue at this point.
Or, yes.
How about the other side on Brand, four hundred?
The other side on Brand, and I apologize, I just learned of it, they are in plan check, my understanding that they are prepared to pull a permit shortly. In the existing moratorium, you have carved out those that have received their discretionary approvals. This project received its discretionary approvals, that's why it's in plan check. We know that, because it's in plan check. So they have incurred expense to this point. Still have the right and the ability to cut that off if you want it.
Right, so there are only two, I just want to make sure that I understand right, there are only two projects that they have the discretionary approvals.
Correct, those are the two that we've been able to identify.
Okay, is, you want to make comments?
I just, how many units is that one, the one that you were speaking about? And it wasn't on my list?
Two-hundred-and-twenty-eight.
I believe that project was approved prior to you getting elected. I do remember the project, it must have been 2013, late 2013, early 2014.
So my thoughts on that are that the, with regard to that specific project, is that the property owner has had that for several years. They had their approvals, design review approvals, five years ago. What we're doing is going to be making, proposing to make adjustments to the DSP that may be resolved in ten months or less if we extend it, that the modifications that we may impose to their design are not going to be a great hardship, because they're, you know, they haven't sunk any design money in yet or anything like that, no. They haven't bought their steel, presumably, they haven't done the excavation. So I don't think it's an extreme hardship on them at this point. They're still very, we're still very early in the stage.
Which one, on Brand?
On Brand.
You're saying they're pulling their permits?
Just a correction, they have pulled a foundation permit, so, but they have not yet begun construction, but they did pull the permit.
Well, they waited five years for it, so I'm not sure what the...
Sorry, when did they get the permit for foundation?
Foundation, I believe, foundation only, foundation only. So to build their...
So when did they do it?
When, what time?
Within the last few days, week or so.
Just a few days ago?
How can they do that?
Mr. Khan represents the project, and I'm getting my information from him.
It's been several months, it's not just been a few days.
Because the moratorium would have applied.
No, the moratorium wouldn't have applied, because it was, it's got a discretionary entitlements. So the way, the existing moratorium, it doesn't apply to projects with the discretionary entitlements in hand, which that project had.
So I think council had already given them the entitlements.
Correct.
Can I, let me chip in for a second. So I, last time when we voted on this temporary moratorium, I was the only one who voted against it, and I think I articulated my reasoning for it, and I stand by it right now, because I think there are things that Glendale needs, and there are things that we need to think about very hard, and we need to analyze before we build more of those. The things that we clearly need are ownership units. The things that should not be impacted by a moratorium are these conversions, these reuses, because if you're moving from a commercial project to residential, and the impact is actually less, well, that's counterproductive, you're discouraging a less impactful use of real estate, so that makes no sense. Also, you know, I think we're, in our concern for the rapid, rapid and rapid development of downtown DSP, we don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater. So smaller projects, relatively smaller projects, shouldn't be impacted by this moratorium. You know, I'm sort of summarizing the arguments that I made, and I stand by them. If there's a possibility to have these carve, you know, the carve-outs, and it looks like there is, I'll support the moratorium with those exemptions. So I'm trying to help you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and, you know, my, let me just sort of reiterate where we are. We've, in the past seven or eight years, we have had a, this is a protest from across the street. In the past seven or eight years, we had a surge of construction, a construction that although envisioned by the downtown specific plan in 2006 was the speed, rapidity, and staging, the gentleman was talking about the phasing and the staging of this, was in no way in any planning staff member mind. It just came on so fast and so furious. And it was in the development of those buildings, the ones that we saw, we all began to detect deficiencies in our design standards. We felt that some of the, the open space requirements were of no use at all, the incentives. We saw that there was no inclusionary housing. Some of the height issues and density issues struck us as being just not what we were looking for in Glendale. The traffic has just gone crazy, we know that on any of our major streets. So it was, it is with this in mind that the proposal for the moratorium came forward, to put a halt on all projects, to give our planning staff, our esteemed planning staff, a chance to go back and listen to the issues raised by council, and incorporate them in a new ordinance for the downtown. We cannot issue a carte blanche, we're not going to build downtown, ever. We cannot do that. I don't think any city should do that. But what we should be doing, and what every city should be doing, is make the very best ordinances so the actual constructed apartment buildings, or whatever they may be, reflect the vision of the city. And that's really what we're doing. Planning staff has not had a chance to probably, you know, roll out their drafting tables and do their research in this forty-five day period. So that's why we need to extend it, to give them a chance to do it. And Phil has assured me that planning staff is going to be working at full speed, and that you have plans to maybe up the staffing to make this a reality. And I know planning staff themselves, as I've spoken to them, are very, very anxious to get onto this and start working. It will be a legacy for them as well, as much as it is for us. So a ten-month period of time is not going to kill anybody. It's something we, you know, before you, look, we're talking about, gosh, just after New Year's, and the way, you know, time flies for this councilman, it's going to be, you know, ready to go, we'll be looking at projects in a very short period of time. We want to work with our development partners. We don't want to scare them away from the city, but they need to realize, and my good friends are here and other places, that we really want the best sort of development for this city. You can't hold us wrong for that. We're hoping that staff does this in a timely manner, so it can come back to us, and we can decide on what the best ordinance is going to be. So that's, I mean, that's where we are, that's the whole purpose of this motion and the moratorium, and I think it's overdue. I think when it's all said and done, we will all be happy with what's done, and we'll have some appropriate development standards for the city for the next, until we change our minds again, but at least until ten, fifteen years, I'm hoping.
So, but what you're saying is you don't care about carve-out for...
No, no. So then the point is, as you raise it, it's a well-known fact that the, and this was what Hassan Harani, bless his soul, was telling me, telling the council, is that the development of residential has a much less impact on the city than the development of commercial. Commercial, everyone flows in, everyone flows out, there's a lot of intense activity during certain hours. A residential project is much less impactful. So if in fact there's a project that will, that will stop the commercial activity from continuing, and replace that commercial activity with residential, the impact is going to be a net, a less impact than building a new residential from scratch. So anyone that wants to come in and do an adaptive reuse of an existing commercial building, we should encourage that. And that's the type of carve-out or, you know, direction that I would like to give. And if there's a small, if there's a small addition of affordable housing, not affordable, well, affordable is always great, if there's a small addition of additional housing, which in the overall scheme still has a less impact, a net less impact than what the commercial building was producing, then we should permit that. That's what we want to encourage, less impact. So that's...
What's the size that you have in mind when you say small? The number fifty was floating.
You know, well, here, let me put it to you this way, if there's an impact, a, if the overall impact is still less than what the commercial building was producing in terms of vehicle trips and all this other stuff, then I think that's what we want. I mean, that would be my, that would be my...
If I may.
My criteria, and I'm thinking, you know, what's a small, what's a small project?
Four?
Well, that truly is a policy call for the council.
Downtown here. Downtown for fifty, I was thinking.
Yeah, we had thrown out the word fifty last time.
We can bring that back to you and bring those findings back to you, and there's a couple of ways to handle it, I guess, you talked in the context of adaptive reuse with maybe some net new units of whatever, fifty, and then what I think I heard from you was in addition to that requirement that those, whatever those projects are, if they're going to be exempt from the moratorium, that it has to be a showing, they're not going to have significant impacts for traffic air, air quality and noise. So if that's kind of where you're at, we could do that. I heard a couple of other things, though, I heard maybe just a broad-based exemption for fifteen under with the same criteria. Again, we'll bring that back and try to make those findings. I'm not sure if there's a, there might, we might want to have an exception for condo conversions, I don't think that there's any in the pipeline, but just in case, that way, because technically the moratorium applies to any tentative maps, and so you want to make sure that those are exempt. And then the only...
That's reuse, right? I mean, type of reuse.
It's reused, but it's technically, it's a convert, it's not even a new unit, it's just a conversion of ownership type, but you want to, you might want to carve that out. And the only other thing I would, I want to address is, Mr. Mayor, you did address the issue of ownership, and as I expressed last time, we still have a difficulty of distinguishing between an ownership or rental project, if it's the same-sized project, rental and ownership have the same impacts, and so we have, we have a difficulty being able to articulate a difference in terms of the impacts to carve just the ownership out. And I would tell you also, it's very difficult to have an ownership used as a use and make a property owner sell those units, just from a practical perspective, to say an owner cannot, if the market falls out on ownership, that they can't then turn around and rent it, it's a difficult proposition. But anyway, in terms of the impacts, the findings you have to make for the moratorium, it's difficult to distinguish. The other ones, we, you know, hopefully we can get there, but the ownership distinction, we think, is a little bit more difficult.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing before I forget, and I'm going to go to Councilmember Okogeni.
So I'm still trying to understand what we are doing. Karma.
Well, what this is, maybe carve-outs is too loose of a term. It is, it is defining the types of projects that the moratorium will apply to and will or will not apply to, and the suggestion by Councilman Nagerian and the mayor is a carve-out for adaptive reuse projects where you have a net, where you have a net new addition of additional units beyond what's in the adapted building, but maybe an additional fifty units on top of that, as well as a small project exemption of fifty units, as long as...
Fifty units is a small project?
Again, that's where the council is, but I think what the council's trying to tether that to is those projects cannot have a significant impact on traffic, air quality, and noise. So we, the exemption, we've written such that it's in the, it's in the moratorium ordinance, but then when, if any of those projects come through that, meet that fifty-unit definition, they still have to show they're not going to have any new impacts beyond...
Do they have to do an EIR? Would we require them to do an EIR to make sure that that's the case?
No, because, well, I would, I would think not, because once you're in the EIR, then you're triggering, you're looking at potential impacts of significance, unless it's maybe historic, but if you're talking about a project where traffic study shows there's no significant impact, or those impacts can be mitigated, you're not going to be doing an EIR. You'd be in the, you'd be in the either negative deck world, or a mitigated neck deck, or maybe even exemption.
But you would, you would be studying that through a technical study. Traffic study is a technical study that you use to piece together an EIR. So it wouldn't just be, no, it doesn't, you have to demonstrate through a technical study.
How many projects do we have like this, adaptive reuse?
I am only aware of one.
One.
Yeah, and I think there may be another one or two small project.
But I would hope there would be more. Honestly, I would hope there would be more. There's a lot of junky little commercial buildings up and down that can be adaptively reused, and I would very much support that type of reuse.
I just wanna understand also, when we say carve-out, I mean, the square footage will stay the same? Or what is it that, okay, you do it and you will add something to it, how this gonna work? I mean, just saying carve-out is not enough. What's specifically we are saying?
If I may, what I'm hearing from Councilman Najarian and the mayor is an exemption for a project that would convert an existing commercial building to residential and then perhaps could add up to fifty additional residential units above that, as long as those projects do not cause significant impacts to traffic, air quality, and noise. That's not what I'm hearing from the mayor or Councilmember Najarian.
You're saying carve-out. It means we have a commercial building-
Yeah, means a moratorium.
With, let's say, three hundred thousand square feet, right?
Okay.
Okay. Let's assume if I make that, uh, two thousand square feet each unit, will be a hundred fifty units, let's say. So then the person can add, can add another three hundred units to it.
No.
So then what we are saying?
No.
They can expand it. What we are expanding, I wanna know what you're expanding, what you're saying.
Well, again, I'm, I'm just trying to, um-
You're doing a good job, keep going.
No, carve-out means if the square footage of that building is a hundred thousand square feet, so you change it, that unit, that building to another, uh, from commercial, you turn it to residential.
Correct. That's, that's what adaptive reuse is.
But then you're adding to it that they can expand to more units, as many as they want.
No, and not as many. It was, the number was, the number was fifty.
Fifty or less.
But also-
Fifty more?
Fifty more.
Decide what that building holds.
Convert inside. But you also have to demonstrate that the impact of those converted units and new units is less than or equal to the office building, the impact of having an office building there. So you'd look at your baseline and you'd look at your new project, see if there's impacts.
I mean, that's subjective way of looking at it. That's not objective way that, looking at it. You're saying we will study something to see how it's gonna be impact, the balance of the project. That's very subjective.
I would note that, well, one, you can't study until you get an application, see what it is they're proposing. Um, but it's, it's, it would be objective, 'cause you would be looking at the, for example, in traffic, you'll be looking at the trip generation and the, the trip counts, you know, little turning angles on, on this, the impacted streets from the existing use, comparing to that to what, what the applicant might be proposing and determining whether or not there's a significant impact in her sequel.
That one, if I bring two different experts, they come up with different ideas that how this will impact. We have seen this all, all the time.
Yeah, that's the way it goes.
That's the way it is, it's always that way on everything.
Sequel's prepared to address that.
This is very subjective. I mean, I have problem with-
And, and can I ask about parking? What about parking if they're building these units on, on Central or Brand? They're not, I'm thinking about parking exa- exceptions and, or are they gonna put in adequate parking? Or, I mean, there are so many with a carve-out like this, or on a busy street where we already know that fourteen out of twenty are rated D or F. Um, you know, we're looking at a lot of other impacts.
Mr. Garpetian- Great, great point, both, both, both of my calls are great points. First of all, if you have an office building that you're going to convert to, uh, a residential, let's say. Uh, for office building by code, most of them have three parking spaces for every thousand square feet. So if you have a fifteen-hundred square foot unit, you have almost four parking, four to five parking spaces. You will be overparked if you convert an office building into a residential unit. Uh, on, on the other hand, Mr. Ogaganyan, it was a great point about the building envelope. If you have an office building and you're, you have a hundred thousand square feet of space, you convert that hundred thousand square feet of space into a residential use, you're not adding anything to it unless you have an excess land that you can add on to it. Otherwise, if you have this building here, you're converting that building into an office building. Oh, I mean, into a residential use. If it's off, maybe it's an industrial building that's five, six stories, you're converting that into residential. Whatever is in your building envelope, you're converting that, unless you have an excess land that some, 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 uh, property owners may have a property that they wanna build forty units or fifty units. That's, that's what we're talking about, the fifty units and less. But if you're converting an existing site, you're converting an existing site. You cannot add to that building because it won't even pencil out for you to add to the building. But as far as parking goes, you're overparked with office building conversion to residential use.
Especially if there's medical use involved. Medical use parking is even higher.
I mean, overall-
Yeah.
Overall office buildings.
So right, but you guys are creating a situation that every time people, they have to come back, they say, this is the exception, that's the exception, and get us involved with this.
No, no.
We don't have a precise instruction, exact instruction, that what has been done for the employees, for the design review board, or other boards, or groups.
This will all come to us. Every project is-
Again, everything should come here. Why we are not making so specific that what we are doing? You have a building, is a commercial building or office building, you're changing to a housing. So I wanna know exactly, then we go back and start studying that, how much, if we are making a residential unit, how many can be fit in that property or in that building? Then why we are doing this carve-out or all those issues? Why are we bringing up? This is, we are working on exception. This will be exception, they can do this, uh, they can build here, we, we are making exception here. Every time they have to come back to us and we have to approve, approve the project. Why there's no standard?
Mr. Ogaganyan, downtown specific plan, if there is a project in downtown specific plan, regardless of it's a brand-new project, or it's a conversion project, or it's, it's a shopping center that's being built in downtown specific plan, it will come to us. It doesn't go to design review board. It has to come to us. That's, that's, that's the thing. So if there's a conversion project, it will come to us. If it's a brand-new project, it will come to council. That's why all this, you know, the, the flyer that Mr. Mohill is bringing, because all the projects in downtown was approved by the city council. So if it's in downtown specific plan, it has to come to us anyways, regardless of it being a brand-new project or, or a conversion project.
Most of the issues, the employees, they can solve. So it was a very minor issue when they bring it here. We, we will, we are seeing all the time, there is dispute, they come here, the staff even are saying, this is not the right way to do it, it comes to us, and then we have to approve it, or one way or another. I mean, as if we are the king of, uh, and everything, what we have to decide. It should be some standards, it should be some way that people, they know what we, they can do and what they cannot do. It should be very minor issues to bring here. This is not, uh, law that may turn this way or that way. This is engineering. A building is part of calculation, math, engineering, that's, should be so straightforward.
But honestly, we don't deal with engineering issues here. I mean, on council, we, our function is not to be engineers. With all due respect, we are much closer to law. We're a legislative, we're, we're sort of a policy-setting body. So we, we do actually engage in law, whether you like it or not. We don't do engineering here.
Yes, we do.
You're the only engineer here. You're the only expert. Mr. Najarian.
I appreciate, I appreciate Mr. Ogaganyan's comments. I think it's something that perhaps, uh, uh, need to be worked through. There's a lot of philosophical issues involved that, that he's bringing forth. But I would propose, uh, what I would like to do is remind everyone that we're not voting on this today. Uh, this is an introduction of the ordinance, to ask, uh, city staff, uh, our city attorney to come back with some specifics and language that we can actually look at and craft and wordsmith, uh, at the next meeting. And if we so fit, then vote on that and, and create the extension at that time. In the meantime, perhaps discussions can continue between, uh, Mr. Lands of Fame and some of the issues that, uh, Mr. Ogaganyan's bringing out. Um, a lot of it is just, the answer is that's just the way we do it, that's the way council's role is framed, but that, that's not really a good answer for you, is to, to tell you that's the way we do it. But I assume, I am sure that there's some good policy and good explanations that maybe can be, uh, worked through with a, uh, perhaps a one-on-one meeting or a two-on-one meeting, to sort of understand our role in all this and what this will mean. What will it mean if we create that carve-out and we extend the moratorium and there's an application? What do we do then? What specific steps for, uh, objective analysis will be taken, uh, by the planning, uh, staff that may allay some of your fears? So I would like to, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce the ordinance.
Well, can I?
Yeah, of course, please, go ahead.
Can I just add something to this discussion?
That doesn't end the discussion.
Oh, okay. Thank you, thank you. My feeling is, the reason we asked for this moratorium was to look at, we, you know, we look at the findings that staff, and by the way, staff did a great job on these findings, the negative impacts of traffic and parking and noise and everything else is, is already at, uh, a very serious level. And the reason we started this whole process was to look at ways that we can move forward and make things in, or make development, uh, better in our city. We are sitting here now asking for a carve-out for adaptive reuse. We have people that are sitting here, developers that are sitting here, that have millions invested already in projects. And we're, you know, that doesn't matter. What matters is that, well, if we do adaptive reuse, we're, we're, you know, we're giving, we're making, we're developing more apartments. These are not gonna be affordable units, I'm sure, if they're on Central or Brand. What are we, what are we helping with? How are we making this, this better for our residents by allowing a carve-out? Let's be fair, let's have a moratorium if we, if we decide to have a moratorium and not carve out anything. A moratorium is a moratorium. And for ten months, a fifty-unit, uh, adaptive reuse on Central can wait for ten months. What, there is no big deal or I, that I can see. I can see them coming here and saying, I'm gonna lose millions on interest if you put this moratorium through. And I'm sure I'm, I think I'm correct, but, uh, so I, I just don't see the logic. We're not getting affordable housing, we're not easing, uh, traffic, we're not easing the noise, we're not doing anything about the negative impacts by carving out a special little spot for adaptive reuse. Um, I think if we're gonna do a moratorium, do the moratorium, treat everybody fairly, and be done. Let staff do their work, they're willing to do it, they want to do it. I think they know it's for, for the good of, the best of the city, for the city. And, um, uh, that's, uh, so that's my opinion of, of this conversation.
I'll, I'm gonna go to Councilmember Ogaganyan, but I will say one thing. Actually, Councilmember Najarian asked for a second to discuss the issue of the moratorium, and I seconded it. And that's how this conversation ended up. On the dais, I consistently, you know, argued against the moratorium. My position hasn't really changed. I'm against the moratorium. I think we're meddling with the market at a time when we, when we recognize there's a housing crisis in, uh, all of California, especially in Southern California. But the carve-out makes it palatable to me to actually vote for what ends up being is a limited moratorium. That's all from my position, that's all. But, Mr. Ogaganyan?
Two issues first. I want, I mean, this is what I want to see. I can't talk about the city council. I want to see a situation that people who come forward this council, they know what they can do and what they cannot do. They shouldn't go for every issue to come to the city council, then we decide they can do this way or that way. They have to have good picture of what can be done in Glendale. So then we're gonna have less problem. People, they buy property and then we change things and we say, you can't do this. Then, uh, our employees say you can't do that because it's not clear what they have to do. We have to create a situation that everything is solidly, you can say at least eighty percent, you know what can be done in Glendale and what it can be done. The other thing that I mentioned before, from the day I came in, I wanna see if we are making apartments, I don't care that much about moratorium as much as I care that every, uh, residential unit would have fifty percent allocated to, uh, affordable housing. This is what I had, I want to see today, that how we are, uh, reaching to that point. I mean, if there is one project in the tube, it's coming, or two projects, or ten projects, uh, we have to add fifteen percent of whatever they're building to be, uh, affordable. I mean, I'm not expecting, there was a project that, uh, they were worried that they have to have three, uh, bedroom units or four-bedroom units. I don't wanna see those four-bedroom units, we say this is affordable, because there is some rules, I guess, on the, uh, Omni building that they have to allocate some two-bedroom, or it was another project, I don't know. But at least fifteen percent allocated to affordable housing, to be added to any project which comes forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Mr. Garpetian.
I think we are, we are all saying the same thing in a different way. One of the reasons for moratoriums, especially on the, on the rental units, is for us to catch up with the inclusionary housing ordinance that we wanna have in place. When the projects come, we won't lose that opportunity because four thousand units are being built, or half of them are built, and we lost that opportunity of having inclusionary housing in there of fifteen or thirteen or fourteen percent. Imagine if we had that from the beginning, we would have, we would have had six hundred units of affordable housing by now. So this step of the moratorium, especially on the rental units, is for us to catch up with the inclusionary housing ordinance that we wanna put in place. And that can be done a lot faster, am I correct? Or the inclusionary housing portion can be done in maybe three, four months, and maybe we don't have to wait another ten months if we have that ordinance in place. But as far as, uh, my, my position has always been that I'm for conversions and I'm for ownership housing, projects for sale, for people of this community. Building four, five hundred units of small one-bedrooms is not only for our community. If you have ownership housing, if you build projects that is being sold, people who move from the residential rental units and buy these projects, they free up their units and you add to your, to the, to the, to your basis of the, the, the rental, rental housing stock. So you move people around by building housing that they can buy and, and live in. So that's always been my position. Build something for the people of this community so they can purchase and move in and they free up their, their rental units. That adds your residential housing stock. So with, with this limited, and I don't wanna say carve-out on, I don't wanna carve anything out, to be honest with you. I'm not carving anything out. What I've always been saying, allow conversions, give incentives to, to developers that build ownership housing, projects for sale. And, and my, my position has always been that way. And as far as inclusionary housing, I'm all with you. When the, the ordinance comes in, we will have all the right numbers as to how much do we have to charge, how much can we charge, what is the right amount. We don't have that today. And if you don't have anything in place, most of these large projects will go through and, and we will miss that opportunity again. So that's the way I look at it as far as affordable housing goes. We need to have the inclusionary housing ordinance in place in order to be able to do anything. And with this, there's not a carve-out. If it's a conversion, I will, and it's more, especially if it's a for-sale product, I will vote for it. I will, I'll, 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 I'll support that kind of a project. And again, if it's in the same, same building envelope, it is in the same building envelope. It's a conversion to, from office to residential.
So there's an intro- an ordinance that's introduced, you have, you have a good understanding of what it is?
We have directions, we'll bring back the different options and the council can vote up or down next week.
We're not voting on anything. We'll revisit it, I won't open public hearing next week, but we'll, we can talk about it if we have to. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Next item? We're done with this? Do we have to report out from housing?
We do. We reconvene housing authority, we have an item of new business, which-
Let's do that. So we have new business, right?
Two items of new business. Two items of new business.
Two items of new business.
One for the Housing Authority, one for the Council.
Thank you.
Roll call again?
One moment, while we bring that up, if you wouldn't mind just giving us a moment?
Okay. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
No, he has to, he has to call roll.
So we're reconvening Housing Authority?
We'll take roll?
I don't need, we don't need a roll, we just need to have the motion read.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Housing Authority Chair. I move that in the matter of Housing Authority of the City of Glendale at all versus Salim Karimi at all, Los Angeles Superior Court case number BC 4600044, the Housing Authority hereby approves the settlement agreement among the City of Glendale, the Housing Authority and Metro Loma SCDC. Among other provisions, the settlement agreement approves payments of $182,457 to the Housing Authority.
Thank you. May we have the roll call, please?
Authority members, Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Karazian?
Sinanian?
Yes.
Chair Agajanian?
Yes.
Need a motion to adjourn the Housing Authority, may?
Move to adjourn Housing Authority?
I'm sorry. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Adjourned, Housing Authority is adjourned, and we have another item of new business?
Yes, I do. I move that in the matter of Housing Authority of the City of Glendale at all versus Salim Karimi at all, LA, Los Angeles Superior Court number BC 4600044, the Council hereby approves the settlement agreement among the City of Glendale, the Housing Authority of the City of Glendale and Metro Loma SCDC. Among other provisions, the settlement agreement approves payments of $182,457 to the Housing Authority.
Do we have a second?
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Thank you, that concludes that item.
Includes new business?
We have closed new business, yes.
Yes. And we return to oral communication.
Now we have oral communications, this is the five-minute portion, and I'd like to begin with Mr. Glenn Webb.
Discussion is limited, time is not part of this agenda. Each speaker has allowed five minutes. Counsel may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you.
Yeah, five minutes. This arrow, this button will advance your slides.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I want to make a few comments on the Grayson Repowering again. Want to talk a little bit about our energy loads and our energy resources, try and clear up a few misconceptions that we seem to be carrying on for months and months about local gas versus carbon-free. And finally, I want to request that we get some visibility about the calendar of the 90-day pause as to when it started, when it, when it's over, and so that I can get my studies into the council a few weeks in advance of the close, so that you can consider those along with the results of your RFI. This is a brief look at the Glendale annual loads. You've seen these figures before. 350 megawatts is our peak load, occurred in August of 2017, and it's scheduled to decline by the PACE and GWP studies to about 300 megawatts by the year 2035. Similar situation for average loads, 150 megawatts is our average load annually. That's a figure that's not been discussed very much, but it turns out to be a very important figure when you look at some other numbers. That gives us an average load for the, for the year of 1,314 megawatt-hours of, of energy use for the city. And this is where our energy comes from, as, this is directly from the PACE study. 47% eligible renewables, and we get up to 64% carbon-free by adding in the large hydro and the 7% nuclear. That totals to, that number, the number on there is, says 67, it's actually 64, that's a typo, but the hard copy that I distributed has the correct number of 64. And 20% gas at Grayson and about 9% other gas. And that's the 29% that you see on the red line on the left side. So the question has been, has been asked many, many times, never answered yet, will Grayson repowering result in an increase or a decrease in Glendale's use of carbon-free energy? We're currently at 64% carbon-free, that's 840 megawatt-hours annually, all imported with no local firming. The plan, if you look at the EIR, is to operate one combined-cycle unit, 71-megawatt unit, at 8,000 hours per year, with no plan to operate the other three units or at least no hours included in there, producing 568 megawatt-hours per year of non-carbon-free energy. This leaves 746 megawatt-hours of carbon-free import or 57% of total consumption. So our consumption of carbon-free energy goes down with Grayson repowering, results in a significant decrease in our use of carbon-free energy. There's been some misstatements of a simple reality. Local generation from the project would allow the city to maximize the amount of renewables imported into the city over limited existing transmission structure. When, in fact, our percentage of carbon-free energy goes down if we firm imported renewables with local gas-fired energy. And here's why. The blue chart in the middle shows a typical solar profile, obviously, in midday we get the most solar. The orange line across there represents a fully leveled solar profile, which requires about 4.6 times the peak solar generation of either storage or generation in order to firm that or level that power. But the firming, the, the load curve is not really flat, so to firm, to real load curve requirements requires something on the order of 2 and 1/2 times that, not the full 4.6. So for each megawatt-hour of imported non-firmed renewable, it takes 2 and 1/2 megawatt-hours of local gas to firm it. And our percentage of carbon-free energy goes down if we firm renewables with local gas-fired energy. Question, it's been asked many, many times, with Grayson repowering, will greenhouse gas emissions in the city increase or decrease? And in fact, I quote from the GWP PACE study, "CO2 emissions from local generation are expected to increase from current levels at Grayson due to repowering." There's a chart, well, I won't go into the other, but that's a direct quote from the, from the, from the study. And my final point here, there's been a lot of talk about our transmission infrastructure being limited, and they've arrived at a conclusion that we can't really get any more transmission capability. And yet, from the PACE and EIR, the study and the EIR, there are four options presented. And the most, and the conclusion is that straightforward and viable interconnect options do exist, yet GWP has no plan to increase transmission or interconnections. And a final thought, in January and February of this year, wind and solar provided 98% of the new U.S. generating capacity that was developed. So where do we want to be in three or four years?
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, if I can answer Mr. Webb's question regarding the 90-day, Mr. Webb? That item, the, it's not actually an RFI, it will be an RFP. Will hit the streets probably this Friday. It will be online, we will have the entire schedule online, so you can see that. And the clock will start actually the day that it is on the streets, so if it's this Friday, the 90 days will start at that point, probably go, I was trying to look at it quickly to August, first week of August. And then we would need some time to review the information, we would be before the City Council sometime in September.
Okay, so this will be an RFP, so you're, you're requesting proposals to do something or you're requesting information?
Information and proposals. So if the information does provide us an opportunity for someone to do something by way of a proposal?
A proposal to install generating capability or to provide information, all of that's open?
It will be very broad, yes.
And it's not going to be funded, obviously, right? You're just requesting?
Information.
Right, okay, all right, thank you.
I have a question, excuse me.
Yes.
Go two page back where it says CO2 emissions from local generation are expected, two page back?
Yes.
Did you do this calculation based on what option? We had three options, the CO2 emission from local generation are expected to increase from current levels of Grayson.
No, this is, this is simply a conclusion...
You're comparing to 250 megawatt?
No, this is a conclusion based upon the EIR. The EIR looked at, at the whole emissions picture, and what you had in there is a listing of all of the things, the things that the power plant will exhaust, NOx and CO2, and in each one of those cases where they're showing major decreases in NOx, for example. In, in the case of CO2, the chart shows a decrease from whatever it is now, 64% less. The problem is that the 64% less was based on CO2 rate. In other words, so much CO2 per megawatt, which doesn't tell you anything because...
My question, I'm sorry to stop you. My question was, there was three options?
Yes.
One was 250 megawatt, the other one was 191, and at last they were offering 131 megawatt.
Yes.
So based on gas.
Correct.
So this sentence, I want to understand, applies to all three options?
Yes, it does. And the reason it applies to all three is that the planned operation of the turbines at Grayson, the only number that you can find in any of the documents is 8,000 hours per year of 171-megawatt combined-cycle unit. That's the only number you can find in any of the documents as to what the planned operation of, of the turbines at Grayson is. 71 megawatts, 8,000 hours per year on one unit. The other three, no mention of operation. That number itself is more gas than we're generating now in Glendale.
Okay, why don't I, why don't we, I'd love for you to meet together and get into the details, as two obviously very engineering individuals, very science-oriented...
Not at all, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Always a pleasure hearing you. Alan Asatrian, followed by Owen Lewis.
Honorable Mayor Sinanian, Councilmember, City Staff, my name is Alan Asatrian, I'm a resident, I'm here as a resident of Glendale. I'm only here to offer my deepest gratitude to the Glendale Police Department, the city staff, to council members that were very helpful in the last few weeks. Specifically, on April 22nd, there was an impromptu march that took place from Maryland Avenue to the Armenian Turkish consulate. I have to tell you...
Which consulate?
I'm, I'm sorry, Armenian, I tend to, I'm sorry, Armenian consulate. The, the way that the police officers were able to handle the situation, the, the warmth that they showed to the people that were marching peacefully on the street was not the Glendale that I, I, I knew. And I, I say this because, especially in the last two weeks, I've particularly been thinking about the first time I actually came to the City Council and spoke when I was 16-years-old, and there was a woman who used to come here, some of you may remember, every Tuesday and tell the Armenians to go back where they came from. My first time coming and speaking during oral communication was to ask the City Council members to stop spewing the hatred within our community. And within those timeframes that we've, we've kind of seen progress in the city, I also used to use the line a lot, "The tone is set at the top." So this is my opportunity to say thank you to all of you, specifically Mayor Sinanian for serving as the bridge between the council and the people, Tom Lorenz, who was absolutely impeccable in communicating with the group of youth that were organizing that. And of course, all of this is led by the leadership of Yasmin Miers, and my sincere gratitude to Chief Pavlidis and my congratulations. Thank you again.
Thank you. It's very kind of you. We, we, I also thanked our police department during public, our council comments for the same reason. So, thank you, that's appreciated. Okay, Owen Lewis, thank you for waiting, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmembers, city staff, my name is Owen Lewis. I'm a Glendale resident. My remarks are even more timely than I thought as I hear the news about the request for information slash proposal coming out on Friday. Because the City of Glendale is at a crossroads as the council examines or reexamines environmental reports on two different projects, the Glendale Grayson Repowering Project and the Shoal Canyon Landfill Power Project. But these are two projects that should be considered as one project and should be included in one environmental impact report. The Grayson Project, Repowering Project and Shoal Power Project are linked in several ways and should not be unlinked in the CEQA review process. The Grayson Power Plant and Shoal Canyon Landfill Gas Recovery Systems have been connected operationally and physically by a five-mile-long pipeline with associated gas conditioning and monitoring systems for decades. The projects are also linked budgetarily with a $30 to $35 million dollar amount allocated for the Shoal Project and the Grayson Repowering Project budget. But the separate piecemeal approach to the environmental reviews of the Grayson Repowering Project and the Shoal Canyon Landfill Gas Power Project are not allowed under CEQA. And there is precedent for successful court challenges to projects in California on that basis because the separation of the two projects minimizes the cumulative effects of both projects, especially regarding air pollution. Therefore, any Shoal landfill gas conversion project must be included in a new RFI for a revised Grayson Repowering Project and EIR encompassing, encompassing both projects. Now, staff may suggest that the pipeline carrying gas from Shoal Canyon to the Grayson is unsafe or may have reached its useful life or may face regulatory issues, but a January 2017 city report concluded that the low-pressure pipeline is safe and that the low methane content of the gas makes a threat from ignition or contamination due to an unlikely break very low. According to the report, a safe evacuation distance is 35 feet and it would take a 1,000-degree spark to ignite the gas. Now, the pipeline was built in 1994 at a cost of about $5 million or so, and it's relatively new in the, when you look at the life of pipelines in general. Now, the pipeline delivers clean landfill gas to an existing large-scale municipal power plant. And in that setting, the full combined heat and power potential of landfill gas conversion systems can be exploited. This asset should be utilized to gain maximum efficiency and lower total emissions from the cogeneration potential of technologies like microturbines and fuel cells deployed at the new Grayson Power Plant along with large gas-fired units. CHP, Combined Heat and Power, is the, is the holy grail of natural gas power generation efficiency. It's supported by the DOE with technical assistance on large projects, and the EPA offers incentives for CHP deployment. Two of the units you propose at Grayson are complex-cycle CHP designs that use waste heat to run steam cogeneration elements. DOE and EPA are working on increasing efficiencies of large gas-fired turbines using external heat sources. By converting Shoal landfill gas to energy at Grayson, water and power has not only free heat source, but one that generates electricity, it's combined heat and power. The City of Glendale has a remarkable opportunity to develop the CHP potential of 21st-century microturban and fuel cell conversion technology, incorporating them in the design and construction of an efficient, modern, large-scale power plant at Grayson. Now, GWP, I have a lot more, but...
Next time.
Pardon?
Next time.
Okay, but just let me say that the projects... But just let me say that the projects should be combined in one environmental impact report, because we all need, we all want one thing, and that's clean air, and that's what this technology offers. Instead of giving us offsets, give us clean air, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We have no more items on the agenda, Mr. Clerk?
Nope.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. So moved.
And we adjourned.
As you adjourn, it's Mike Garcia's birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Happy birthday!
Happy birthday, Mike Garcia.
Happy birthday, yeah.
That's why you're going home early tonight.
We all forgot.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.